Twenty-four, roll call please.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Reed?
Present.
Member Satterwhite?
Present.
Okay, so for, we have two things on our agenda tonight. First is the admissions policy for the Frederick Douglass Collegiate Academy. And Dr. Gardner, I believe you're gonna make a little presentation for us about that.
Hello.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Alright, so I'll open by saying that based on our experience over the last couple of years, we wanted to codify something for the Policy Subcommittee regarding Frederick Douglass. We have held lotteries in the past two years and we have had some experiences that lead us to say we need to create a policy. So what we did was, we formed a committee and within the committee was represented departments in LPS such as special ed and MLE and also leadership from the school. The principal was at the, was invited to the committee. And the committee came up with some things they would like to see in the policy. And then we had this reviewed by our lawyer, Katie Manault, and now we're presenting it to you. I can read through it, so it is, is open to all eligible in public school students in grades nine to twelve. Lottery forms made available to all students must be completed on or before February fifteenth in order to be considered for the following year. For next year, there are eighty-eight spots available in the freshman class at FDCA. If there are more applicants than available spots, a lottery will be held to determine who will be accepted. Some students will be prioritized in the lottery. Students attending Thurgood Marshall Middle School in order to offset overcrowding at Lynn English High School. So we have done that for the past two years and we, we did not do, we, we did our priority recruiting at Thurgood Marshall and we only really did kind of like mass communications to the other middle schools. And it was, we had stated to the committee for a couple of years in a row that it was to address the overcrowding at Lynn English. So however, given our recruiting summer melt over the summer, we realized we needed to make a much broader recruiting effort. And so the same types of recruiting efforts were made at the middle, at each middle school. And we did have a much better turnout for the lottery, for the lottery. So we want to maintain that we do some prioritizing of Thurgood Marshall students to not lose that offset for English High School. And then we've also encountered some situations where it would have been easier for some families if we could have had a sibling preference. So we wanted to put that forward for your consideration. So once the lottery is complete, students who are chosen will then complete two separate applications. An application for FDCA and a second application for NSCC. As part of the application process, students will be asked to submit an artifact and a writing sample. Prior to admission, all students must take the Accuplacer test at North Shore Community College and participate in an interview with FDCA. To give you a little bit of background for that, all ninth grade students take the Accuplacer that are in early college throughout the whole district. So that's not anything special to FDCA. Nobody, no students were excluded from FDCA based on the Accuplacer in the past two years. And if a student's scores were a little below the cutoff that they wanted, they gave students time to do a writing sample. So that's why the writing sample is there because it's part of the North Shore application. So I wanted to share that with you. The committee presented the idea of an artifact similar to what LVTI uses so that students could, if, to the FDCA admissions part of the process, that, that is where that would be used and that would give students different ways to show their desire to be at Frederick Douglass. So it wouldn't just be a writing sample option. You know, they could create a slideshow of pictures, create a PowerPoint, create a brief video, those types of options for them. Okay. And then we're requesting an interview simply because we want to solidify with students and families that they are actually coming to Frederick Douglass. We want them to come in and visit the school and meet the principal. And also want to have a chance to explain what the commitment is to Frederick Douglass and what it is really gonna entail to be at Frederick Douglass. Because the early college classes escalate as you move along. We're going for that associate's degree, so we really want students and families to understand what that whole, you know, it's a very supported process from ninth to tenth grade to eleventh grade and it's a gradual release, but we want them to know. And we're proposing a team of educators who will work together to review applications and evaluate relevant information to determine prospective student eligibility. And we haven't put our acceptance date out. We have run our lottery, we have one hundred and twenty-eight applicants for eighty-eight seats. So our recruitment was successful and now we're just proposing this to see, you know, what we are able to do in our application and process. Can I answer any questions for you?
Thank you, Dr. Gardner. Are there any questions of the committee?
I just wanna voice that there's a correction on the admissions. It's actually for twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, thank you.
This is moving forward.
Yep, yep, thank you. Yep, okay. Member Gailey.
Good evening, Jim. Dr. Gardner, I'm just confused about the available spots. Why is there only eighty-eight here where like I believe that it was a hundred?
This has to do with actually the North Shore contracts. So the North Shore contracts have limited seating caps. So most of those caps are twenty-two. The class sizes are also small, so North Shore did try to work on negotiations to make something special happen for class caps for this school, but it, it hasn't been able to happen yet.
Member Dugan?
Thank you. Dr. Gardner, so this is just a technicality. The February fifteenth date, I know that, that's fairly close to February vacation. Again, just kind of my strange brain. Would it make more sense to just maybe do the Friday before February break? Cause that fifteenth, does it kind of fall maybe sometimes on the break or sometimes on that? I don't know. Just, kind of an odd request, but just for me, would it, just a little more?
It wouldn't fall on the...
Does that ever fall on the break or?
No, because it's always, the break comes President's Day and it's the third Monday of February.
Okay, alright, thank you. You think I'd know that, but yeah, that's one I wait for, but alright, thank you.
Just those small tidbits I learned in history.
Yes. Right, thank you, alright, thank you.
I think the honor before language would also give us some flexibility.
Okay, oh, right, thank you, okay. Thank you, thank you for the clarity.
Any other questions or comments? Do I need a motion from someone from the Policy Subcommittee?
I make a motion to accept this policy. Oh, sorry, move it to the full committee. I make a motion to move this policy to the full committee.
As amended.
As amended.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Satterwhite?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, thank you, Dr. Gardner, that was, that was great, thank you. Alright, and then we have one other thing on our Policy Subcommittee agenda and that is our graduation requirement, so that's Policy IKF. So this is something we tabled, it's part of Section I and we tabled it to come before the full committee, cause that's something we thought the full committee should be aware of. And I know Doc, excuse me, Attorney Gallo and I think, yes, we, yes, I know, I'm sorry, yeah, but we're here to help us with the graduation, yes. Molly Cohen is here to help us with the graduation. It's been a long day, I apologize, Molly. She's here to help us with the graduation requirements, so take it away now that I'm completely embarrassed.
Alright, good evening, members of the administration, Superintendent, Mayor, Madam Vice Chair, members of the committee and Subcommittee and of course Subcommittee Chairperson Dugan. For the record, Charlie Gallo, Compliance Officer for the Lynn Public Schools. My pleasure to be here with...
You've forgotten me too?
No.
Molly Cohen, interim Executive Director of Curriculum, soon to transition to Deputy Superintendent, thank you.
Thank you for having us tonight. In your policy, or in your committee packets, you had a proposed graduation policy IKF. You'll notice I'm not coming before you tonight with a grand presentation with a PowerPoint. This is not one of those policies, so perhaps a reprieve for Chairperson Dugan who's been through that a couple of times and Subcommittee Members Reed and Satterwhite. I'll be back in the future with one of those, I'm sure. But for tonight, one person who, who looked at this said to me a short time ago, this is really just common sense and so that's why you have the presentation and the form you do. MASC put forward in November a proposed policy IKF. We thank the Subcommittee for putting that on pause so that the curriculum team and the guidance counselors in our schools could look more closely at it. That has since occurred and so our process, what was first to look at that MASC model policy, next to look at similar districts and neighboring districts, Brockton, Lowell Revere, Swampscut, Lynnfield, and then some working group meetings involving Ms. Cohen, myself, all of the curriculum assistant directors, Assistant Director of Compliance, Lauren Walsh, and Ms. Jules was there to represent the school committee. Special shout out to all the guidance counselors from all the high schools and especially Lynn Tech because we want to be sure that we're putting forth graduation policies that are also inclusive with regard to career invoke students. Big picture, MASC Core is the state recommended framework, the state recommended course of study. This proposed draft aligns to the rigor of MASC Core. It aligns more to the MASC model than the current LPS policy. It aligns more to neighboring district and it codifies what the actual practice is in the Lynn Public Schools. This is an old policy, we're not, we're, we're really more following MASC Core anyway, so this is the common sense that brings us up to date and the rigor that is recommended by the state. That's big picture and I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Cohen to take you through the policy with more detail.
Thank you, Charlie. I'd like to thank Charlie and his team, he's always a pleasure to work with and, you know, very, he does the deep research to make sure that we are being equitable in our, in our policies and our procedures. So just, you'll note, there are just a few changes. One of the pieces that we wanted to make sure we were doing was to modernize the language, so some of the language in the old graduation policy was out of date. We no longer refer to foreign language, it's world language, it has world language standards. We want to make sure that we're representing the actual work that's happening in our schools. In terms of rigor, there are two areas specifically in the sheet that we're, in the sheet in front of you, and that is around art and math. So we are increasing math from three years to four years. And our belief system there is that math is fundamental to all life skills in all areas of, of our lives, career or college and beyond. So that's really important to us. I do want to say there's a note there though, that we understand for the students who are sitting in the high schools now, that they didn't have that in mind when they were planning, right, their graduation plans. And so that will be in effect in the class of twenty-six. So, so the students in eleventh and twelfth grade now, this will not apply to, but it will apply for all classes after twenty-twenty-six. We've also increased art. We really want to elevate all sides of the curriculum, you know, all parts of our brain. And so that's why we've elevated art to have one year during the four years in high school, four or five years. And so then the other piece that I really want to talk about a little bit is how inclusive this policy is. This entire revamping that Charlie and you and MASC have been going through is around separating policy from procedure. And so one of those pieces is in the prior policy, we had the twenty-five credits per year that you needed to be promoted and it was set in policy. That really limited our ability to be able to meet the needs of very diverse students. And so when we talk about the alternative pathways work that we did last year that we're continuing to do this year, that idea of being really creative in student progression models for different students who have different needs and different life circumstances, this will no longer limit us because we can do multiple different ways of getting the credit or the coursework that students need for their particular pathway. And so that's also why we lowered the world language requirement, which previously was three years, but we've lowered it to two because to the point we talked about last time with the progression, excuse me, the program of studies and elevating vocational studies, elevating different types of pathways for students. The three-year specific, I'm gonna refer to it as foreign language, cause that's what it was then, was very limiting to a narrow-minded movement towards college only. That's what, that, that is for college requirement and we're trying to expand what you have opportunity to do. And as you know, that is not at all to say we're diminishing world language, cause you know in the Lynn Public Schools, we ultra accentuate our strength as a multilingual community with the biliteracy, the seal of biliteracy, the stamp test, increasing AP in world language. So I just don't want the message to be lost that we definitely see the value in world language, absolutely, right? But we just don't want it to limit other courses for students who are expanding maybe beyond college. I think that is pretty much the main, those are, I think, the main takeaways for us. And I do want to thank, as Charlie did, the guidance counselors, the assistant directors in curriculum who have, we talked about this, we talked about equity, we talked about ensuring that students have pathways. And so that work will live in the student progression model as opposed to twenty-five credits per year in the policy.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen and Attorney Gallo. Any questions? Yes, Member Reed.
I think this one's for you, Molly. Regarding the new four years of mathematics, so is this gonna be additional courses or more, or will require more of the same courses? Like, do we have to have another Algebra II class, something like that, or logistically, how does it work?
Yeah, no, 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 this is, we, well, we're gonna be presenting to you the program of studies that is expanding math courses already. But this is also getting sort of ahead of the financial literacy pathway that has really expanded and blown up across the nation in a good way. And so it's just ensuring that our students have the four years of math, but right now when it's the way that it was previously, some students might only take three classes.
Gotcha, makes sense, thank you. So you know further questions, motion?
I make a motion to put this policy to the full committee.
Oh, I'm sorry. Member Penya?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Were students enrolled in Lynn Tech and they may opt out from world language? Can you elaborate more on that? And there's MASC Core?
Yeah, do you want to?
Absolutely, so, so the world language requirement, and again, as Ms. Cohen said, is something that we embrace here with the dual language program and the other examples that Molly mentioned. But MASC Core recommends two units, two years of world language and, and I actually have the printout and can give to Ms. Jules for folks, but also says that students who are in an approved, approved voke program can opt out with the rationale being they're going to perhaps use that time for more career or vocational type training. Doesn't mean they have to, this is about minimums and about flexibility. And I will note that we looked at five other districts and most of them actually have a less rigorous world language requirement than we're putting forward tonight. Several of them don't have any world language requirement at all. So we're still holding to a certain level of rigor, but, but again, aligning to MASC Core.
Can I speak to this? So when we talk about rigor, we want to remember we're not only talking about academic rigor, we're talking about the vocational pathways where they have internships, you know, apprenticeships. Those are the hours and they have to meet a certain number of hours in order to get certified in their OSHA training and everything. And so it's just competing with hours in the day for students. But, so I just don't want to misrepresent that rigor lives in all areas, especially vocation.
Okay, so there was a motion to put this, oh, remember Cassianus? Did you? Oh, okay. So just need a second from a Policy Subcommittee member? Can we get a second?
Yep.
Yes, thank you, okay. Roll call please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Satterwhite?
Yes.
Okay, and so that's all on the agenda for the Policies of Committee, so just supposed to adjourn. Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, adjourn. That goes to the mayor now, yeah.
Alright, we're gonna start open mic. The open mic session is designed to provide an opportunity for citizens to express their views on matters of concern in the school committee. The sessions are not designed to encourage debate or lengthy exchange of views, but are to have the committee understand numerous points of view. The committee would appreciate speakers keeping their presentation in three minutes in order to accommodate as many people as time permits. The chair reserves the right to limit, thank you. The chair reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on the same topic to three. All speakers must be at least eighteen years of age or enrolled in high school in a Lynn Public Schools district and having discussed their views with a student government representative. The chair reserves the right to rule the speaker out of order if he or she feels that the speaker's comments are personal in nature. If a speaker's comments are directed at a school committee member or a member of school administration in attendance, that member, through the chair, may address the individual. The sessions will promptly commence fifteen minutes prior to the start of the regular school committee meeting. And sign up, we have Paul Malo. If you could state your name and address, please.
I'm also over eighteen and in high school, so. Paul Malo, it's sixteen Normandy Road in Lynn. I teach at Lynn English High School and this is my thirty-first year of doing that. I did spend twelve at Thurgood Marshall before nineteen at Lynn English. I'm here tonight because the staff at Lynn English, pretty much the entire faculty from all the people that I talked to, and many are excited that I'm here tonight, because we filled out survey after survey after survey after survey of how we felt, how we felt, how we felt, and how we felt. And many of us think that, yep, you've read it, there are numbers on paper, and most of us feel that very little or nothing is being done to address our needs. We are your employees, the City of Lynn, excuse me, yet our schedule as it's currently set, okay, and believe me, I understand contracts. If it has anything to do with the satellite program, there's contract, I get it. However, it's a grind on a majority of the staff that's there already. Just to list a couple examples, from my own personal experiences, two days this year, three days last year, from seven forty-five to two thirty, I was with students with the exception of my thirty-minute half-hour lunch. But since there's no passing time involved in the school day, I spent part of my lunch getting children to move along in the hallways. I don't think that's right, I don't think that's fair, it's mentally exhausting. So some people say, well, you have an admin that day. Well, let me just give you a couple examples of some of the more high-intensity admins, one of which I had last year. Bathroom duty, where we assign kids on in and out of the bathroom. Now mine was ninety minutes long, two days a week last year in one sixty-minute period. And it's a constant flow of children with no breath in between to even like get up, do anything and monitor the bathroom at the same time. It's just a grind and we did that three times a week. Now if you have calf duty, you have ninety minutes of that on top of the rest of the day that you're in class, where you're monitoring six hundred, seven hundred students, making sure they're going through the lines, et cetera, et cetera. It's exhausting. I like calf duty, but I don't think I could do it too. And if what I saw coming up for next year, one of the blocks is three times a week with that, I don't think it's, it's, it's just mentally exhausting, okay? We also have the new, and I know it's state mandated, but the advisory program for the half hour this year. The homeroom teachers have to plan for that and not the, and not the person assigned with them and sometimes depending upon whether there's an emergency or something with some of the, the ancillary staff, like a social worker or whatever, they don't always get there. My social worker sidekick was not there yesterday. I did hear from her, she had an issue, but there I am. And then if you're one of the lucky people that have one of the lesser admins and there's people out on a certain day, you could wind up covering classes for days and days on end on top of your own schedule, okay? Your schedule is grinding us to dust, period. So I just ask everyone here, if you can please find a way to incorporate some sort of break during the day where the teachers can take a breath, maybe use the facilities and, you know, at the end of the day, may still have some energy to run their extracurricular programs. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at open mic? Please, if you state your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Lisa Chavarria and I live at twenty Heath's Court here in Lynn. Good evening, school committee members. I recently wrote a pretty lengthy email about some concerns I have with clerical errors on attendance and grading as well as attendance policies. I'm here today to address the issues and how we can find a solution. Before I do so, I just want to say that all the teachers, guidance counselors I've communicated with over the years have been nothing short of amazing and I truly appreciate each and every one of them. My main concern and reason for being here today is a new pilot in-class attendance program that was implemented by the district. To be clear, this is separate from the normal attendance policy where if a child is absent more than four unexcused absences in a quarter, they get D minuses in all classes. Before grades closed last quarter, I confirmed the grades my son would receive for each class. He was on track to be on honor roll. When grades came out, he got a D minus in English. I immediately reached out to the teacher to confirm it was a mistake. He confirmed it was an error, so I reached out to the guidance counselor and she explained to me that there was a new pilot attendance policy that states if a student is marked absent in one of their classes within a quarter, the grade in the class will be an automatic D minus. My son currently attends Lynn Tech and for his last class of the day, which is English, he has to go from the annex building to the main building, up a flight of stairs to the opposite side of the building. My son has never laid to any of his classes, but had trouble making it on time to this one class where it was located from his previous class. The English teacher said that once the bell rings and the student is not in the class, they are marked absent, but as soon as they walked in, he changes it to a tardy. I want the committee to understand that my son works very hard to achieve honor roll every quarter. He stays after, after school, excuse me, hours at a time after school and earned a B in English. We never saw the D minus, when he ever saw the D minus, he was understandably upset. We are basically giving our kids an F for being late. Again, my son was not absent and did not miss any classes. We are setting our kids up to failure, for failure if we do this. We are diminishing their motivation to do well and I ask that this policy be revisited as it's very discouraging. I would like the committee to take into consideration that sometimes teachers don't dismiss students right as the, at the bell ring and as a result takes away time from the student to get to the next class. Or maybe we're just not allowing enough time for the kids to get from one building to another. The guidance counselor has since reverted my son's grade to a B, but has had to correct two hundred and ninety-six other freshman grades. This is not a very resourceful use of her time, in my opinion. I know open mic has limited time for parents... I know open mic has limited time for parents to speak, so I wanted to address my main concern, but there have been numerous occasions where there have been clerical errors on attendance and grades, which I detailed in my original email to the committee and attached emails as proof. We are human, and we're bound to make mistakes, but there are some sort of check system that we have to ensure that this doesn't happen. You have parents that might not know how to check grades online, don't speak English and understand. This can affect our students' chances for future opportunities. In my son's case, he wanted to attend Lynn Tech, so grades and attendance were everything, especially to get into the shop that he wanted. Thank you for your time, and please let me know if there's anything I can do as a parent to help this get a solution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak at open mic? Anyone else for open mic? Last call for open mic. All right, we will now call to order the fourth regular meeting of the school committee. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gailey?
Present.
Member Peña?
Present.
Member Reed?
Present.
Member Sadowite?
Present.
Mayor Nicholson?
Present.
I would also like to introduce and recognize our student representative from Lynn English, Julian Perdomo Guerrero. Welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome. Very glad to have you here. All right, for those who are able, if you could please stand for a salute to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. Justice and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is the minutes.
Make a motion to accept third regular meeting on February eighth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, eyes have it. District strategic planning. Presentation.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to invite, Kim, are you, do you want to present them, our Bellwether team, or?
Our lead is here and.
Wonderful.
Hello. So we're really excited. Let me just speak in here.
Yeah.
Hi, everyone. I'm Molly Cohen, and I'm the project lead for the district strategic planning, and we're really excited to introduce Bellwether, our Bellwether partners. Akeisha, you're going to be speaking. Okay, so Akeisha K. Vin Howell will be speaking to you tonight about the process, and we've already started, and it's been going swimmingly, so thank you.
Yeah. I have to. I have to. And then I. 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 Good evening, members of the school committee. It is absolutely our pleasure to be with you this evening. We are excited to be partnering with Lynn Public Schools as you craft your strategic vision and plan for the next three to five years. Want to spend some time this evening just introducing our team and providing an overview of the process, as well as welcome any questions and early insights that you yourself might Again, our goals for today are just to introduce the team, and again, we just want to really make sure that we are well-aligned on the process. We'll spend about the next twenty-three weeks together, and we have a lot of work to do in that time, and certainly recognize how important your engagement is as members of the school committee. And so really want to achieve alignment on the process and a shared understanding of our goals by the end of this time together today. My name is Akeisha Craven Howell. I am a partner on the strategic advising team at Bellwether, and I have the pleasure of leading our project team. I come to Bellwether having spent the last sixteen years in senior leadership roles in Charlotte Mecklenburg schools. I'm currently based in Charlotte, North Carolina, in Chicago Public Schools prior to that. I turn to our project manager, Nicole Jackson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nicole Jackson. I am an associate partner with Bellwether. I was previously in Miami-Dade County Public Schools as the executive director of, oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I was just. Ooh. That was affirmation. Thank you.
Just Miami-Dade County graduate over here, sorry.
Sorry. My last job was Miami-Dade County Public Schools as the executive director of Innovation and School Choice. Prior to that, I was in Virginia Beach City Public Schools, where I oversaw education policy and also our public-private partnerships. And I am saying, I am pleasured to say that I was a middle school teacher for almost twelve years and a principal for seven years, so really enjoyed going through the buildings today, seeing your babies, your teachers, and your staff. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you. Kametra.
Good evening. My name is Kametra Edwards, and I am a senior advisor with Bellwether, and I'm really excited to be on this project by history and my background. I spent the majority of my life working in schools, from the teacher level, school psychologist, principal, executive director, art school founder. I'm not that old. I'm calm. But my stand right before joining Bellwether was huge as a bellwether and working with school leaders across the country, helping them develop strong teams so that you can have sustainable change in schools.
So as you can see, our team brings a wide range of experiences in lots of different kinds of education settings, but what I hope you will also see as we walk through the process, that the expertise that we really rely on is right here in Lynn Public Schools. We value so much the expertise of your central office leaders, your school leaders, your teachers, your students, your families, and community partners, and our goal is really to facilitate a process that brings all that to the surface so that we can leverage it to both craft the vision and the plan for Lynn Public Schools. We kicked off our project with your team in mid-February. Our goal is, at the end of this project, we will have cast a vision for the next five years for Lynn Public Schools, in that we will have helped you to create a strategic plan, one that both talks about like where you are today and where you want to go, and then is very clear about the things that you will differentially invest in and support on your pathway to achieving those five-year goals. Importantly, we don't just want to leave you with the strategic plan, but also with an implementation plan. A strategic plan is only as good as the tools and the systems and the structures that accompany it, to make sure on an annual basis, you're taking kind of the incremental steps that allow you to make progress to those five-year goals. And so in terms of deliverables, at the end of the twenty-three weeks, you will have both a strategic plan as well as the implementation plan that supports bringing that plan to life and making it actionable. As we think about like how we will ground our project, we have identified a number of key questions that we want to answer throughout this process. I think you all have copies of the presentation, so I won't read through each of the questions, but I will just kind of give an overview of how we've bucketed the questions. So this first bucket of questions is around the current state and the landscape. In order for us to define where the district wants to go, we have to have a shared understanding of where we are starting. And that is not just about the opportunities and things that need to be improved, it is also very much about the bright spots. And so we want to surface those things that are working well, things that are emerging as best practice, so that we can replicate and build on those things. But then we also want to be really honest about where there are opportunities for improvement, and to be clear about which of those we will take on and prioritize going forward. We have already had the benefit of a number of really insightful conversations today as Nicole and Kametra have been in schools, as I have had one-on-one interviews with members of the central office leadership team, and as we've engaged the steering committee. So we're already learning quite a bit about the district and the work that you're doing here. The next set of questions is around strategic vision, impact goals, and priorities. And so if the current state tells us where we start, this set of questions will help you all to define where it is that you want to go over the course of the strategic plan. One piece of feedback that we have heard loud and clear is that the existing strategic plan is, has a very, kind of provides strong direction in terms of what are the strategic objectives, and then what are the associated initiatives. Where we have an opportunity to build on that plan and go even further is to ensure that there are measurable objectives that are aligned to those strategic priorities. And that's part of what we will want to get at here, not just articulating the impact goals that we want to have, but then what are the measures? How will we know when we have been successful? And then what are the kind of the leading indicators? Some of these goals, these are long-range goals, as we think about the places that we want to take our students, the ways in which we want our students to demonstrate success. These are not one-year goals, and many times are not two- and three-year goals. And so you also have to have those leading indicators that give you confidence that you are making progress towards these longer-range goals. And we want to make sure that we help you to define those things as part of identifying your impact and priorities. And then that last set of questions is really about implementation and measurement. So you have a set of priorities, you have some objectives, but they span five years. What does year one need to look like? What are the incremental steps you're going to take each year to build toward that five-year plan? And importantly, what are the routines that you're going to have at the school committee level, at the executive leadership team level, importantly, at the school level, to look at data, to step back and say, are we doing the things that we said we were, we were going to do? If we are, are they having the effect that we thought they were going to have? If they are, great, let's keep doing it, let's move forward. If not, let's take a step back and reassess. What might we need to do differently? Where might we need to have extra investment? So that implementation plan and those cycles of looking at and managing with data will be incredibly important, and those are also a set of questions that we want to help you We answer those questions to help Lynn Public Schools develop a theory of action. We start with the current state, that first set of questions, and then we kind of leapfrog over to the intended impact. So once we have those bookends, then we move to kind of what's going to be that messy middle, because there's going to be a lot of iteration in the middle. There's going to be a lot of initiatives and priorities that seem really exciting, and we cannot do all things well. So we're going to have to narrow to some high-leverage drivers of impact, and that's what we have in the middle there. So we're going to first define where we are today, we're going to skip over and define where we want to go, and then we're going to come back and define the work that will bridge those two. And we're going to do that over twenty-three weeks, which sounds like a lot when you say the number, but it will feel like tomorrow before we all know it. We're currently in phase one, and we will be in that phase until about mid-April. And the phase one is all about understanding the current state and fleshing that out and making sure we all have an understanding of where the district is starting. As we think about this process and about phase one in particular, stakeholder engagement is incredibly important. It's one of the most important inputs to the entire process, but to phase one in particular. We really want to see the district through the eyes of the district stakeholders. Certainly, we have lenses through our prior work in urban districts, in charter systems, and in schools, but we know that there are no greater experts on Lynn Public Schools than the folks who live it every day. And so we ground our work in stakeholder engagement. When we do that, our equity commitments that we have adopted in Bellwether are incredibly important. And so as you look at those equity commitments, you see things like sharing power, and that's really important. We understand that in all communities, there are individuals and parts of communities who are used to having power, who are used to having agency, who are used to having their voice influence decisions. And we want to make sure in our work that we're hearing from those folks, but that but that we're also incredibly intentionally reaching out to folks who don't have that level of agency. And who sometimes represent the communities who need the district the most. And so we really want to hear about, from them, their experiences and their needs and make sure that it's a part of the process. That stakeholder engagement is also cyclical. It's not one time. So we want to hear from stakeholders. We want to come back as a leadership team, as a Bellwether team, and we want to synthesize what we heard, and we want to create options in response. And then we want to take those options back to stakeholders and the community and say, did we hear you right? And is what we're crafting and drafting, is that, does that respond well to what you were trying to tell us your needs are? And so it's a cycle of kind of stakeholder engagement where we go broad, we come back into a small group, and then we go back broad again. And so you will see that kind of stakeholder engagement and input as a part of the plan that is ultimately crafted and created. There are a few groups that we will engage on a recurring basis throughout this project. The first group are a set of project leads. You see them listed there on the slide. We are really grateful for the input and time of these individuals. They are meeting with us weekly. We give them things to do in between, like reach out to stakeholders and help us to have access to school visits. And so we really are appreciative of their time and their insights and engagement in the process. We also have a steering committee that we kicked off with today. And that steering committee is made up of folks from central office, individuals from our schools, and also community partners as well. We had a chance to spend a couple of hours with that group today, and they shared a lot of really helpful insights about the current state of the district. And so we look forward to continuing to engage them at multiple points throughout this process. And then finally, you, the school committee. Having, understanding your priorities and making sure that your strategic oversight is well-aligned with the superintendent's strategic plan and priorities is incredibly important to us as well. And so we look forward to opportunities to engage you and to get your insights about what you would like to see in the strategic plan as well. As I mentioned, today, we began engaging stakeholders with the steering committee kickoff. Today and then also tomorrow, our team will be in schools, and that gave us the opportunity to observe classrooms. We have had principal interviews, teacher-focused groups, student-focused groups. We'll have at least one family-focused group tomorrow. And these conversations will continue. Once we leave the district, we'll continue to have these remotely, but we thought it was really important to have the kickoff in person and to begin to have some of these conversations in person and build relationships. What you see on this slide is Bellwether's District and School Health Assessment. It has a number of components, things like academic program, district and school culture, finance, strategic planning. And this will really ground and anchor our current state assessment as we look to, kind of look at the district's current practices, your data, your outcomes against a number of these dimensions and components. And so over the next six weeks, we will continue to focus on that current state assessment. We look forward to sharing back with the steering committee our findings and certainly look forward to an opportunity to share those with the school committee as well. That was a lot. I talked quickly, I realize. Welcome any questions or reactions to this process and our approach that you might have.
Member, Senator White, Member Castellanos, Member Reed.
Hi, thank you for your presentation. Can we be specific on external stakeholders and like what the research shows, what actual stakeholders that we should be including in this process?
Yeah, and so when we talk about external stakeholders, we're, you know, we're talking about individuals who are not employees of Lynn Public Schools, are not members of the school committee. And so so far, we have already started to engage in external stakeholders. We're talking about our students and their families. We had a wide range of community partners represented on the steering committee today, from the Boys and Girls Club to higher ed institutions, understanding that the ways in which they support the schools and the district's priorities are also incredibly important. It's important that as we engage these stakeholders, we're doing it, one, to see the districts through their eyes. So we want to understand their experiences. And two, you know, we're clear they're not playing a decision-making role. It's an input role, and we will weigh kind of their input against that of others, against that of best practices, against the data in the school system. But they are an incredibly important stakeholder.
And then just my last question that I had. I was looking at the school assessment, and I'm just curious why finance is so like far down on the list? Since we have issues with net school spending and other things that it can, you know, impact the rest, why that's kind of so far down there?
That list is not in order.
Okay, okay, thank you for clarification.
That school, the district and school health assessment, we, we look at all of those things in aggregate to get a full picture of the district. So the numbers don't imply an order.
Thank you.
Sure, absolutely.
Member Castellanos.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Very robust, informative. I did get the chance to read the email that was sent on the selection process. Congratulations. I, this might be a question for the district on that process, on how we vetted the consultant. Could you guys kind of elaborate on what that process looked like in terms of how we got to Bellwether? Because I, I love the credentials I hear, I just want to know how we got to that point. And who else was in the conversation?
Member Castellanos, we went through a very extensive RFP process. There were, I think, a total of six or seven referrals. We went through, that then entails a very lengthy evaluation process against a rubric. And at the end of the day, Bellwether was the chosen piece. And I think it was, there were two things that stood out for us. One was their equity framework in Lens, and the other was their school and health assessment. And what the other piece, I think, that really was enticing for us was their, their focus on facilitating the process in a leadership way along with the district.
Okay, so can I just ask a clarification around our, I see the school committee's participation, right? I see that we're, we play a role in the whole operation of development, this, this plan. Could you get more specific around that? Like, are we, are we able to, because when I see phase one, phase two, phase three, are we able to say, listen, we don't really agree with some of the, for me, I conduct up to 15 interviews and focus groups with stakeholders. I feel like that number's got to get tripled. Like, we've got to have a lot more input. I would like to see more collaboration. Like, that's key for me, right? But am I, is, am I able to do that part of this process? Or are we just going to be abstracted? You guys, we get information from constituents, or, you know, are we sharing with you? Like, can you just enhance me a little bit?
I, I can certainly share my instinct and would defer to Dr. Alvarez. We would love to have an opportunity to, you know, to speak with you individually and understand each of your priorities. We blew that 15 number out of the water today.
Yeah, I know, I figured.
Like, we're, we're already past that, and we'll continue to go past that. We do as much community engagement as, as is needed to make sure, again, like we have shared voice, we have shared power, and that we've reached all parts of the community. You know, typically with a school board or a school committee, we would come to you kind of at the inflection point between each phase and share with you kind of what we found, for example, in phase one in terms of the current state. Get your reactions to that. Ask us, ask you what we missed or perhaps didn't get quite right. And then also in phase two, as we begin to kind of think about the district's five-year impact and some of the priorities, that again is something that we would want the school committee's reaction to as well.
Great, thank you. Member Reed.
One and a half of my questions were asked. So just half the question that wasn't asked, as opposed to the external leaders, who are the internal leaders? Is this principals, is this a number of teachers? Can you just speak on that a little?
Yeah, so we have a number of central office leaders that span kind of elementary and secondary. We had representation from ELA, math, and the arts. In terms of principals and teachers, we had a couple of principals today and a teacher. One of our realizations coming out of the steering committee today is that we want much more representation on the steering committee from our, our teachers and our principals as well. And so we will make sure to shore that up in, in advance of the second steering committee meeting. But we will also make sure that we're engaging that voice through interviews and focus groups. So the steering committee is not the only way
Sure, sure.
that we're getting that representation and input.
Thank you.
Can I just touch on that just slightly? First of all, it was not intentional. We were trying to keep the size of the steering committee manageable while making sure that we were inclusive of many different elements, right? But when we separated into our separate groups, there was a, you know, the community partners group that went into one room, the district leadership went to another area, and the school-based staff went to another area. It was very clear to all of us there was imbalance. And so we thanked Sheila for bringing it, you know, to attention. Sheila, we know Sheila will speak her mind and her truth, and we appreciate that. And I assured her and the teacher who was present that we would revisit that and get more balance. And I had a conversation with Bellwether about that.
Awesome.
And I would say that that's not uncommon. We oftentimes will have that steering committee kickoff or even the first working session and say, hey, you know, like this was a really rich conversation, and I think we're missing this, this set of voices. And so we can add to the steering committee throughout the process. We want to be flexible and nimble and adjust to kind of what we're finding and any kind of shifts in the context.
Thank you so much.
And please keep in mind that there were staff focus groups that were happening as well.
Just the steering committee, yeah, sure, thank you.
Member Pena, Member Dugan, and Member Gayle.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Very informative. My question, when you go back with the, how often are you going to come back to the data? Because I know, as you said, you have a plan on where we're at, where you want to be. How often can we go back? Because sometimes we can try to have some measurable implements, and they're not going to be working. So how often can we come back to, to look at something? And I know it's a long-term commitment. Will you be available, you know, for that, the entire commitment? I think it's five-year plan, you said?
We, we, we really invest in our partners. A lot of times you'll hear me use "we" language and have to correct myself because I don't actually work here at Lynn Public Schools. But I say "we" because we already feel so invested in your work and in you. And so we are always available. At the end of this 23 weeks, you know, the recurring engagement might end, but we are always available for questions.
Another question I have, were your leads, your project leads, are you working with the DEI officer? Just so you could share some of your visions and your experience.
Am I, I'm sorry, am I working with?
Diversity Equity Inclusion Officer?
He's on the steering committee's, yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, Bobby Bishop is on the.
Bobby Bishop is on the steering committee.
Yes, the, the presentation does not list the members of the steering committee, but yes.
And parent engagement is huge, is student, because we have a very diverse population.
Yes.
We have a big Latino population, and getting their voice and their input is very, very important.
Absolutely.
Very diverse community, thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Member Dugan, great, all right. Thank you for the presentation. I guess my question would be more for maybe administrative team. So the staff that is going to be teachers, educators, you know, people that are going to be there, are they going to be chosen, volunteers? How's that going to work? How's that going to look?
I think the natural transition for a teacher group, I have, we've gone through a process where elementary teachers and secondary teachers have volunteered
Okay.
to be on a cabinet, which meets monthly, where we discuss a number of issues. We're in the second month of that. And so it, it seems like part of the natural process would be to just, and I was talking to the secondary teachers today, this afternoon, that those teachers would be the group that provides feedback because they are representatives from their school. They were selected by their peers, faculty, not administrators. And so, and, and they are not necessarily also, they were not selected by L T U. L T U is a part of those groups, but it would make sense that those are the teachers that represent the voice.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you. And then our next question's from Julian, who I'm going to ask the question. So she was wondering, how are you going to engage students and families moving forward? So, which is a great, another great question.
Yes, I love that question. And, you know, when we think about a strategic plan and who we are designing for, it is for students. You are, you are who the district is serving. So we want to make sure that your voice is very much included. We started with student-focused groups today at the schools that we visited. We will have student-focused groups tomorrow at the schools that we visited. I believe that there might also be a student cabinet that we want to have the opportunity to engage and speak with as well.
I'll have lots for Julian because she's got some good ones, so.
Member Dugan, we, we currently have 10 advisors that are grades nine through 12, and they also meet monthly. So they are also anticipating working with Bellwether.
Follow-up, you're good. Good, all right. Member Gayle.
Thank you for your presentation. I just want to go back to some things someone said about the teachers. We just came off of a period where a lot of teachers' voices were not really heard. I know that because I got the calls and I answered those calls, concerns and issues. So I just want to make sure that those teachers are involved in this process so that, not that I'm not getting those calls, but, but that their needs are being met as, as well as the students. Because they're the ones in that classroom every single day with our students and can see what's successful, what is not successful. And I, I really want them to feel not intimidated. I want them to feel that they can actually express themselves and they will be heard. So I think this is really important to our teachers. So if you can make sure that happens. Then on another point, we just had someone come in here from Open Mic, at Open Mic. He is a teacher at Lynn English, and he discussed about this schedule. And I've been listening about this schedule, this is the third year now. And I think that this needs to be addressed. And if this is not like a glaring thing to this project, like, address this. What is wrong? How can we fix this? So that we still can have early college, we can still have Frederick Douglass schools, and we can all work together so that they're not so taxed, they're not so, so stressed. I taught in the high school, I taught in the middle school, and I don't think that I would like to stand in a cafeteria and be doing a lunch duty for an hour and a half. So I just think that we really do need to meet that. We need to figure that out. We need to take care of it in these 23 weeks so that everybody can do their job and everybody is happy in their jobs. And that's what I'm hoping for. But thank you for this presentation. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation, we really enjoy work. We look forward to working with you all and everybody involved, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, new business. We have the lease for Briar Cliff Lodge and the TEAMS program.
Thank you. In your folders, you have a lease agreement that we would want, that we need to take a vote on and would want your support. This would be an agreement between Lynn Public Schools and the City of Lynn Parks Commission. Their term there would begin July 1, 2024. There's no cost to the agreement. And this would allow us to relocate the TEAMS program that is currently housed at Lynn Tech to this facility after it's renovated. And so the ask is that the consideration and the vote is taken on the use of this actual site. Dr. Kellella is also here. If you have any questions specifically about anything that deals with our student population.
Castellanos, Member Reed, and Member Pena.
Well, this is, I think this is a probably a general, I think a lot of us got an email from a constituent around a student non-verbal. There were some concerns about the student being around the body of water. Will I get into the details? Could we kind of talk about the safety piece a little bit? Elaborate that part of, you know, identify liability. I think that was something that I saw in that email, I would like to.
So, so there, we have worked with Desi, and they did come to tour the facility and have expressed the need for very high fencing. And I think we intend to go even beyond, like, what is recommended. In addition, we, there's, I don't know if you're familiar with the property, but when you are like at the parking lot level, there's a place that you, we have, where we have plans to put a fence in right there so that it's like the outside of the entrance. So that there's like that block right there, so that that parking lot wouldn't be accessible. Students wouldn't be able to just walk right out there as it looks like now, if you go to that entrance. So we are taking that very seriously. We, I, I say it at least probably five times every time we tour the place, tour the facility.
Yeah.
So we've talked about it a number of times. Laura Stockfish from the Inspection Services Division has been there. We've talked about the kind of fencing that needs to be used. She is very clear on that. You know, if you look behind the property, it's like a concrete, like wall right now. But like, no, there is not going to be any way that anyone could climb anything, and it is going to be high, very high.
Yeah, I went, I went down, took a look before, and just, I'm glad that you said that because I was like, we really need some high fencing or something that's larger. And also the type of fence. And do we, do we have like a projected timeline on what that would look like when we would be able to accomplish that?
The fencing or the whole project?
The project and the fence.
So, so this is a piece, oh, this, well.
The safety will be in place.
Oh, yeah.
And it's part of the whole project. So the fencing would be part of all of the work that's being done. And it will, we have stressed non-climbable fence. Like, it can't be chain link because that's climbable. So it has to be non-climbable.
And just, I just want to assure you that Desi has to come out and approve the project when it's completed as well. So they've already come to tour and to, you know, I'm sharing the plans with them. Anytime, you know, that we've toured the property and we've made, you know, adjustments to the plans, I share them with the representative from Desi. She's very responsive, gets right back to me, asks questions. I follow up with those questions. So we're, we're working very closely with them. And they will come and tour and make sure. But they've also stressed, you know, some of these same points that you're making.
And there's two areas that we're looking to do, like outdoor activity spaces. One is down below, like where that stone wall is. There's a nice patio area that planting, you know, beds could be. Actually, there are planting beds there now, we would want them upgraded. And then up above, there's an area where the dumpster is right now that we've talked with Laura Stockfish when we were there about moving the dumpster.
about moving the dumpster to a different location and making that fenced in and having a safe, secure play area for students outside.
And that would really, you know, focus on like a sensory playground. In addition to that, you know, not forgetting that we are moving to the vercatte system. This would, this facility, this location would also be included within the same, would have the same locking mechanisms on the doors, safety features, no one comes in, no one goes out. And so, you know, including the cameras and everything that comes along with that system. So in this particular setting, students are almost, they're two to one, two adults to one student.
At times, yes.
And at times, three adults to one student. So the supervision, right, of the particular students that are placed there based on their I E P requires a number of adults to student ratio where they are responsible 100% of the time to be with that student. So students are not unattended at any time.
Member Reed.
Yeah, I, I got those emails and a lot of calls and everything about that as well. So I appreciate that. And I guess another kind of logistical question, I know a lot of these kids will probably be bussing into the, is there a way, like, is the, is it going to be fencing when they pull in the bus or will they be releasing? I'm trying to picture it.
Yeah, so the way that we talked about the fence is that it would come across and there would be a gate in the middle that we could use to access to get in. And then, so as you, when you pull in at the different levels, there's, you know, entrance to the different floors. And so we would use probably two different like kind of stops to drop different students off to make sure that they're, you know, close to their classroom.
Yeah, I mean, thank you so much, Dr. Colella. And another concern that I got was kind of just more general and I'm sure we've all heard this one too. So I'm not introducing anything new, but just sort of around engagement in the project. A lot of parents felt that they found out through Facebook or other means. I know this letter went home to them and everything. I just hope that there are more opportunities for them, not just to hear about the project, but to just.
Nope, there certainly will be. And so I, I just want you to know that when it was announced here, and I think that there was, we were trying to follow a process of, of, of the school committee being made aware of it as well. Immediately the next day, I sent a communication to families and to staff and then found out that some families, we didn't have email addresses for, so they didn't receive them. So then I followed up with another communication to update email addresses for any students who didn't have that. I've sent that out via text message and we had the school advocate for families who didn't receive that. And then we followed up with a survey and I only received two pieces of feedback on the survey that I sent out. And I sent that out through school messenger, so it went out in multiple languages to families. And then at this point, I think that we were still, we had some feedback from staff in terms of, you know, they went and toured and were able to give some feedback about the location and, you know, what would work best for the students there. And I think that we're now at the point where we want to involve families for feedback on some of the plans that we're putting forth.
And just keep in mind, like, everything's a process, right? The, the finalization of the floor plan, like we, you don't want to share information that then you're going to have to come back and say, oh, never mind, we had to change this. So we wanted final floor plans. We're now, we now have the architect working on 3D rendering so that they can get a better. It's hard to look at a flat floor plan to see something that's more three dimensional, where they could get an idea of what the space would look like. So we're waiting for those to come. And the plan, Dr. Colella and I and Dr. Alvarez, we've been talking about. The next step is, you know, a staff meeting to share, you know, all the information, listen to questions, answer those questions. And for families as well, a webinar, because I'm sure it's going to be, it would be hard to do an in-person for many parents. And so we most likely will do a webinar to allow them to be able to ask questions and hear all the information about the project.
They have a monthly coffee time as well, so we're also very open to going to that and attending that.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Colella. Thank you, De.
Member Peña.
Thank you for the clarification around some of the answers, you know, questions we had. I did get those calls about, emails about safety. A question I had with the boat ramp is that when the fencing, is it going to separate the ramp or is the ramp going to be moved at some point?
So the, the fencing will be close, closer to the building. So the boat ramp will be like kind of out of play. Like the, the, the fencing will be closer to the building side.
So it'll separate.
Yes, it will separate it for sure. Absolutely.
And so I'm not sure what funds that we're using for that, but it's just, you know, are we going to finish the project in time?
For the renovation?
Yeah, because we have to use these funds, right?
Yes, correct. They're remaining Ezra funds that were repurposed to really create an environment that was specifically designed for students that had either complex medical conditions or were considered medically fragile. The, the current classrooms that they're in were regular classrooms that were repurposed and were not designed for medically fragile students. Within this actual location, there are areas and rooms that are specifically for changing, for feeding, as a kitchen. There are no safety issues with students, you know, that are peers that may not be paying attention. And, you know, in hallways, for example, there are a lot of situations, right, that we want to make sure that we would, that we would consider when we're talking about safety. And so those are, is there anything else you would like to add, Dr. Dugan?
I think that we're very excited about the vocational cooking space. So there's like a space for the students to use with laundry and their own cooking space in addition to, you know, the kitchen where like food services will provide lunches and breakfasts out of.
And the, the area that it would be designated as well for them to be able to engage in movement time and, which they currently do not have at Lynn Tech. So that way they're able to walk, they're able to, you know, do any therapy that they need the entire time they're in school versus just, you know, either trying to coordinate a schedule with other students that are present in a location and/or, you know, inclement weather, which doesn't allow them to go outside. So they would have specifically an area where they would be able to do, engage in those activities.
Thank you. But once again, my question is, are we going to be able to finish this project in time? Because I'm familiar with the area, you know, the foundation wall, building the fence up there is, you know, it's a, there's a lot of tasks behind it. Are we going to be able to finish this project?
We've been working with I S D closely to make sure that, you know, they're aware of our, of our timelines of when we need to disperse these funds by, so.
And the R F P or the bidding, it's a bidding process that they do for the, whatever contractors take on the job. They were very clear in the documentation that, you know, what the goal of the completion date would be. But I do want to caution all of us that construction, the way it is, we, if you've ever done remodeling in your own home, I have. What they, when they tell you six weeks, sometimes it becomes, you know, six months. So, you know, we're not going to move anything until it is ready to, to be inhabited, right? And so, but the goal is that it will be ready for the fall.
We cannot move it until Desi approves it.
And Desi has to approve it. Correct. Thank you, Christina.
Inflating costs and, and timeline. But the good thing, advantage we have, it's not, it's vacant right now, so we can.
Correct, correct. There's no, you don't, you don't have to do second shift because students are there, which is what typically happens in our schools. Now they can do it regular shift and maybe even do a second shift, right? So, because there's no one in it. So hopefully that will expedite the process for us.
And the location is already ADA compliant in all aspects of, you know, the rooms, the, the bathrooms, everything that is needed. So that makes it less challenging and more of a renovation versus a, you know, complete build out.
Yeah, we actually, one piece of feedback that we got was an adjustable changing table, which is something that we took and we're actually placing an order to have now so that we can determine if this is the, you know, best thing, this is what they want to use to get a sense of that. It was, it was such an easy, easy request and something that we didn't even think of, so.
Thank you. Member Dugan.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Colella, for all that. My question is just the public space and the public use of the boat ramp while school is in session. This is a space I use quite a bit personally. You know, my dogs swim there. I use it for my kayak, things like that. So while school is in session, is the boat ramp still going to be accessible to the public?
Yes, we can't, we can't close it off.
Okay, all right.
We did ask, actually, to put a gate.
That's why I'm asking.
But you can't, you can't. It has to remain open. And it was also another reason why we wanted the fence further up and so that that was completely separate.
All right. And so then the next comment would be communication to the neighborhoods, Slus Pond Association, those streets. That's going to be critical piece two that I do not want to forget.
The plan is to do that as well. Doctor, doctor, ooh, Lorraine, you're a doctor now. Member Gailey and I have had many conversations. She has a plan of action, ready to go when we're ready. We just, we need your vote to move forward with the next steps of the plan.
Yes, okay. All right, gotcha. All right, thank you. So I'll make a motion to.
Who's making the motion? We'll, we'll get back to it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Christine, I just want to go over the checklist that I have because we went in there, I went in there. And for parents, I want you to know that, that when you look at that building, it is not going to look the way it is right now. It's going to look completely different. That's why we are going to get some architectural drawings of what it's going to really look like. And then I'm going to get a packet. Then I'm going to recruit my fellow school committee members and we're going to go out to the neighborhoods and we're going to give those packets and explain what's exactly happening. So all your questions should be answered. And if you have any more that we need to work on, you'll help us.
Of course.
The fencing, we, we were very explicit about that, talked about that. We talked about the floors. We talked about the lighting. We talked about getting in touch with staff and families and then going out into the neighborhood. So that's what our plans are. And I really would highly recommend this project because, oh, one last thing, I just have to clarify. When you have the parking lot that hits Lynnfield Street, there's a parking lot and it's going to come up, it's going to hit the ramp. And that's where the fence is going to go across. But inside that fence, I thought we might be putting some kind of sensory playground in there?
I think we decided to move it up to the top where the dumpster area was. I think that we found that better. I think that there was an issue with the grade at that area right there and it not being the appropriate place to maybe put any of those, like any structures or anything like that are sensory friendly.
Because one of the parents in the program, their child is like very, will be very happy to see a playground that her child can actually play on. And I would concur. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice question. Just a clarification question. Didn't some of the older students in this program, didn't they regularly used to go on, I guess field trips, wrong word, but they're regularly outside of the building?
That, I think that's more the life skills, 18 to 22 in college. Yeah. But, you know, we do, we have co-op students who work with our preschool, the Teams preschool setting. And that, that will obviously continue that work. And we're working with Bobby Bishop on expanding the Best Buddies Program. So that's another great opportunity.
Yeah, I think the reason I was asking, I know there's obviously concerns around the isolationism of this all. So I really urge any, you know, any people that can come in, obviously it'd be difficult to go out, so anyone who can come in or any type of programs like that, I think we should take.
That's definitely something that we are exploring and will make happen.
Thank you, Dr. Colella.
Thank you.
Did you have another question? Okay, great. What is the will of the committee?
There's a motion on the floor.
Who, who, sorry, who made the motion?
Eric.
Okay, seconded?
Seconded.
All right, roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone, for all the work that's going into that. Very exciting to move forward. Lease for Greg House, okay.
So the next lease that you have in your documents is for Greg House through June 18th of 2024. And Deputy Rogero will discuss the reason why we need to.
Yeah. So if you recall, Hood School getting a second modular, correct? And if you recall, the modular wasn't ready and did not arrive in time for the opening of school. And so there were four preschools that were slated to go into that space. Requiring special ed to relocate two of the classrooms and consolidate students who were slotted for the two new classrooms within open slots throughout the city. We've been waiting for the Hood modular to be installed and good news is, it started today. Two sections, I believe, were delivered today. Another section will be delivered tomorrow and they will begin putting it together. So that's great news. This lease is because special ed has been working hard to, to figure out where these classrooms, these four classrooms that we needed a place for, there were two that didn't have a home. We have relocated a few of them within our schools. There was one that we didn't have any space for within our schools. And so Greg House was very gracious, right across the street from Hood School. They have their smaller Greg House facility and they had a classroom that was not being used. And so Jackie Gallo approached them, asked would they be willing to allow us to use it just for the remainder of this year? And quite honestly, if the modular gets installed and is ready to be used in the spring, we could even move them into the modular for the remainder of the year so that they are within the school. They will still be connected to Hood. It's right across the street. The, Kim and I were talking that, you know, the distance for the nurse to walk from where the nurse's office is to the modular that is currently at Hood is probably more distance than it is to go from the front door of Hood to across the street to Greg House. So it will be part of the Hood School. It will be inclusive to Hood. So this is, we're asking for you to approve this so that we have a home for this classroom and these students for the remainder of this school year.
Thank you. Any questions? Member Peña?
Make a motion to accept?
Second. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Member Dugan?
I actually see the mod.
Did you see it?
Yeah, it's on the swing.
Oh.
They had all the traffic, so.
Thank you, Member Peña. Member Dugan, any votes taken in the Policy Subcommittee meeting?
Yes, we had two. The first was to accept a policy for the acceptance into the, I'm sorry, I have to, I need cheat notes, thank you. Yes, the graduation requirement, so policy, I was looking for the coding I K F. So we'd need a motion to accept that for the full committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, thank you. Hold on one second, I'm sorry. Okay, oh, I'm sorry, yes. So the second one is the, to accept the admission policy of the Frederick Douglass Collegiate Academy.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
And that was that. Thank you. Thank you. Communications and information.
Our last item on tonight's agenda is a communication that we received from Desi, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education regarding our net school spending and the requirements that need to be met for reconciling school year, funding year 23 and then 24. And Mr. McHugh, could you just speak to the letter and what it means for us as a school district, please?
Sure. The, the letter is, every year, as you're well aware, we do the end of the year report. It's really a reflection of the year that just ended. And it also gives a projection for the current year we're in. It's really a reflection of the year that just ended and it also gives a projection for the current year we're in. So the good news is for the prior year, we were over net school spending. However, based on this school year, they're projecting that we're going to be under by three point two million dollars. Since this has happened, we've met with the CFO and the mayor. They, I believe the city council last Tuesday night appropriated an additional one point one million dollars to the school department, which still doesn't cover the full cost. But the CFO has informed us that the health insurance cost is, he's going to need additional three hundred thousand dollars of funds for health insurance costs for this year, which does meet net school spending, which is on the city side. They pay our health insurance cost as well as the utilities. He's going to need four hundred thousand dollars for utilities on his side. They cover those costs as well. And then on the Druid School, we received a waiver for the project that's happening at Druid School, which is five hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, which still leaves a shortfall of about eight hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars left to cover. Where, what they're recommending is since we have transportation, it doesn't, if you go to my budget, the only thing that doesn't count is transportation. So if you go to my budget book and look at the transportation page, we have to pay that, but it doesn't count towards net school spending. Because it's supposed to be refunded, a refundable amount per the state, but I've been doing this for over twenty years and they've not funded it in twenty years. So it doesn't count. So we always have a little extra funds left over at the end of the year because there's millions of dollars there and some of the costs are going to be there. So what we would normally do is reallocate the difference of those costs towards net school spending items. Last year, if you recall, we bought a lot of computers. So if there are any funds left over, we would do that so that those computers would count towards net school spending. So that's the approach we're going to be trying to take to close this cost, the gap on the three point two. However, if we are short at the end, when we do this end of the year report next year, we'll, we'll see how much we're short. Then that amount has to be, will be added to the following year's net school spending requirement. So that has to happen. That's the rules of the DESI in the state, that if you are short this year, they'll add that to next year's net school spending, which that has to be made up at that time. So that's the overview, that's the plan. I can answer any questions if you have any regarding that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. McHugh. I mean, I think this is sort of, we've had this conversation in this, in this forum before. The, the situation we're in, where, you know, we're absolutely committed to meeting net school spending. And we budget with the intention to meet net school spending, but you don't know what the number is until the, the year's already gone by and then we have to play, do the catch-up thing. So that, that's a, a back and forth that, you know, we've had several times here and a, and a constant conversation that's happening between, you know, the public schools and the city team, particularly the financial folks. And, you know, we will continue to keep a very close eye on that. Member Gaitley?
So could this money, Kevin, go towards, I have been asking for four years for the staging and so has a member Castellanos for the Lynn English High School auditorium staging. And also, Dr. Alvarez, in her interview, said she wants to change the cycle of when the curriculum, when you, we actually purchase the materials for the curriculum, so it's in the spring, so that they can, teachers can actually have time to process the curriculum they're going to teach in September rather than do it in August. So would this money be able to help with those two things? Because those are my, those are on my list of things that I want done.
Yes, actually, the million dollars is going to be going towards curriculum to buy all our curriculum supplies now. So I've been meeting with the curriculum director. We were just waiting for the actual transfer of funds. I know they, I believe the city council voted Tuesday night. Once the funds are transferred into our account, the curriculum team has already been working on those costs and we were hoping to get those purchase orders probably going out within a couple of weeks.
Okay.
So that then the things will be here well before the end of the school year.
Oh, thank God. And then the other thing is the staging. The, like Lynn English High School has been without, they finally got the feasibility study done. I don't know where it is, maybe you do, Deb, but I just want to make sure that money is available for that staging to get done. I went to their play on Monday. They did a very good job, but it was more like a black box studio, not like an actual auditorium stage.
I believe it's in the bid process at this point. I know the fees, I would have to confirm that, but I believe it's in the bid process right now.
But these monies would take care of that?
It's already been accounted for.
No, so, no, we're only receiving one mil, little, one point one million dollars and that's going to be going towards curriculum. So the cost of the stage would be a capital improvement cost, which wouldn't count towards net school spending unless you went for a waiver on it. So, and we don't have those funds, I don't have those funds available as of today for that.
Alright, thank you. I would just like to make sure that happens.
Can you explain the waiver process that you just mentioned? What does that look like, if you were to do a capital improvement plan, like staging?
The superintendent would have to write a letter to the DESI and they would have to approve, like, what you're doing if they're going to allow a waiver to go towards net school spending. It's something that's an individual case by case, depending on what the need is. They could say yes, they could say no. So that's, you know, anything over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is considered a capital improvement project. So if it's, if anything was like under a hundred and fifty thousand, it would just be maintenance. And then maintenance counts towards net school spending, but capital improvement does not. So like the Druid School was something that we wanted to get done and back in the fall, they requested a waiver and through DESI and it took them, I think, two months to approve it, but we finally got an approval on that project. So that'll help towards the net school spending issue.
And that specifically was for the heating, right, issue? That could not wait, like, it was not really a request that we could have students waiting for. We, although we haven't gotten all the bids back, I think the estimates for the Lynn English Auditorium were somewhere between six hundred and eight hundred thousand for a, the renovation that's needed there.
So just one more follow-up, is just with that also, thinking about like all the, the weight rooms, the athletics, is that something too, like if it's under one fifty then, or if it's something that we could explore as well as renovation waivers?
Well, it depends what it is, but what, what happens is, again, as, as Mr. McHugh just shared, DESI, DESI is very firm on the fact that they don't want you spending, right, the funds that you receive in chapter seventy for capital improvements. And so there, that's part of the reason that they review it on an individual case by case basis. So there's no telling, right, whether something like that would get approved. I mean, we obviously need to upgrade those spaces in all of our high schools.
Is there a cap on waivers?
On what waivers?
Oh, is there a cap like every year? Like, how many times can we actually even pull that?
No, yeah, there, there isn't a cap. The, I, it's, it's, it's a great question about the waivers and it's, it's one we've been thinking a lot about because that a hundred and fifty thousand, that number was sent, set like fifteen years ago, I think, maybe? So you think about how the costs of construction have changed over the last fifteen years. The, the number just doesn't make sense for, for the amount of needs that we have and the amount of money that are required to maintain, just to maintain the, the facilities. So this has been something that we've advocated for at the state level for quite some time, working with the delegation. And they filed but legislation. We have also had a discussion with the gubernatorial administration on what we, we see as a potentially available administrative route for, for the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education to increase that cap, the one fifty. And, and that, that conversation's ongoing. We've also been joined with other, been, other cities have joined in that effort, other gateway cities who are in a similar, in a similar position, so we're, we're really pushing on that. And we, we, the administration has sort of signaled that they're receptive to the waivers because they recognize this, this situation that we're, that we're in. And, you know, on the, on the English auditorium, the other thing I'd say there is, I mean, we don't, we don't know yet how this is going to play out because it's part of, part of all this is, is just the moving target of all these expenses. But if, 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 if it does play out that the transportation does not encumber some of these funds that are, that are currently in the transportation line, that would free up then net school spending funds that you would, that the administration would be able to direct towards different projects. You would still potentially need a waiver, but in terms of available, potentially available funds. Any other questions on net school spending? Is there anything else you wanted to add to that?
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Alright, so you know further business?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't have people using the clinic. It's, you know, one of the things we tell veterans all the time. Sometimes they don't want to enroll. Veterans will say, well, you know, I don't want to take it away from someone who needs it. And one of the things we keep trying to get across to people is you have to think like government. They're not going to provide the services if you're not down there. So even if you're only using it, even if you don't think, you know, and one of the misnomers about VA healthcare, you can use VA healthcare and keep your own healthcare. It's a really great resource. The biggest problem we have once is getting in there. I'm telling you, it's good care for a lot of people. And if that's going to be our big pitch for the year, that's the way we're going to help the city and EDIC after doing such a great thing for us. And the council and the mayor's office and the state delegation stepped up so, so great with us in terms of trying to keep that clinic here. We, I don't think people realize how close it was to moving. So we're thrilled to have that good news.
Do we have any more questions for, our VSO, Mike Sweeney? It's not a public meeting.
This is not a question.
Okay.
Can she go to the podium?
Can you come to the podium, please, Leroy? Sorry.
I wanted to add a friendly amendment to the speaker's remarks. The state term for what he was describing is utilization. And when I was asked by a former mayor to give some thought about how the services at the VA might be kept in Lynn, the very first question that I asked is what is the utilization rate? That is, to what extent are our people using those services? And when it's time to reduce, they reduce based on that factor.
Thank you so much for that. All right, so it comes down to outreach, which we could really use a lot of, a lot more of to our veterans. And Mike, and we're working on that. All right. Our last person to come to the podium will be Andrea Gail Bennett. She is the secretary for the state executive veterans office. So are you going to update us on?
I'm going to update you.
Okay.
And so it's the deputy secretary, I'm not the secretary. He's off doing other things. So I'm here on behalf of EOBS. And there are two things that I would like to highlight that you should be aware of. And the first is to highlight the governor's new budget proposal and how it represents progress for veterans and their families. And as you may or may not be aware, currently, there's an annuity that veterans and family members are given in the amount of $2,000 a year. It's paid to Gold Star parents, widows, service-connected death widows, and veterans who are 100% disabled. The HERO Act that was proposed proposes to expand that benefit to $2,500 a year, over two years, if approved by the legislature. And this would help families and individuals who live on a fixed income and who couldn't use in these economic times an extra bit of money. And so it's actually a $4.3 million investment that the governor's budget is proposing to increase it. And so if you have any questions about that, I'm happy to answer. And so just so that you're aware that that's what's going on, so that if anyone asks you, that is something that's happening. The other area that I would like to highlight, and Wayne briefly mentioned it, is that the governor recently launched a new initiative focused on tackling veteran homelessness across the state. And our department and the Department of Housing with Secretary Augustus, we met together to discuss how we can work on this combined and veteran homelessness campaign and engaging with local communities. So that brings us to Lynn and that Lynn Armory. This is a perfect opportunity to work with the state to provide housing for veteran, homeless veterans. And I guess they don't have to be homeless, but on the verge of homelessness, but just to provide affordable housing for veterans. And, and again, any questions, feel free to ask me about that.
Are you asking a question?
Can I ask a question to the generals? Is that okay? Sorry, I'm Council McLean. General, how are you today?
I'm doing very well.
But I think a 25% increase in the annuity is fantastic news. How would I be able to reiterate that to our constituents? How would they sign up? How could they be aware of it?
So procedurally, as you know, the HERO Act, there was a hearing, there was a hearing, and it's going through committee. And so it hasn't been approved yet. So as legislators, let your legislators know that you're in favor, in favor of it. It is, it is favorable among the current legislatures. We don't, can't say we have no doubts, but you never know what's going to happen. So let the legislature know that we all want to, to support this, to support this bill. So once that's done, then that information will be passed down to the VSOs, and then they will pass the information out to local veterans.
So just to clarify, we're hoping the legislature approves the increase. However, if you're looking to sign up for the program, the liaison would be the VSO?
Correct.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions, concerns? Go ahead, counsel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Secretary.
Deputy Secretary.
Madam Secretary.
Deputy.
Clarification with your comment about the Armory. Is that a go signal or just a wish list?
No, this is a go signal. My, Mike, who did we meet with last week? Jeff Waldron. Yeah, it's in process right now. And so I know they've spoken to the architecture and things are in the planning phases, phase. So what needs to happen is connect with EOBS and housing at the state level for funding because there's money.
So it's moving now?
Yes.
Congratulations. That's all I want to hear.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Just to clarify, what would we have to do in order to make those connections? Is there anything that the council can do in order to make sure that that connection is made for the housing for veterans?
I'm going to look to Mike. Do you know, do you know in terms? Yeah, so. There is a steering committee.
Okay.
I don't know all the members of the steering committee, but you can always contact me and then I can send that information out to the powers that be. But yeah, just keep it on your front burner. There's money.
Thank you, Deputy Secretary. Any other questions or concerns? All right, what is the wish of the committee? Thank you so much. I'll set, Deputy Secretary, you can have a seat. Yes, please come to the podium.
If I could just add to what I was talking about, the parade. We have formed a committee. David Solimini and myself, or David Solimini Sr., myself are the co-chairs. What we're looking for is a grand marshal. And I was thinking that somebody, if somebody had somebody that they can nominate from Lynn, specifically a veteran, to be the grand marshal of this parade, because it's a Lynn parade, would be super. I mean, there's also talk about looking at some, you know, General McChrity and some of the other generals that are from the Massachusetts. But if we can find somebody from Lynn, doesn't have to be a general, that could be the grand marshal, it'd be great. You can get ahold of me or get ahold of David Solimini Sr., if you have somebody to nominate.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any words? All done, all set? All right, what is the, what is the wish of the committee?
Motion to adjourn.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the base and meeting committee meeting. Madam Clark, please roll call.
Counselor Net?
Present.
Present Counsel Hogan?
Present.
Present Counsel Chakutis?
Present.
Present Counsel Walsh?
Present.
Present Counsel Field?
Present.
Could you please read transfer news?
We have $1 million from free cash to fund the FY23 net school spending shortfall.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
$400,000 from free cash to ISD expense for the FY24 budget shortfall in school electricity line.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
$636,271 from the wage SAB expense to fund the FY24 shortfalls for city of Lynn and local 739.
Motion approved.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
$45,598.64 from the reserve to fund personal buyback per collective bargaining.
Yes. Motion approved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, $45,072.82 from the reserve to fund sick buybacks per collective bargaining.
Motion approved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
$12,237.50 from the reserve for the police department maintenance contracts, not in the FY24 budget.
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel.
And if that's going to be our big pitch for the year, that's the way we're going to help the city and EDIC after doing such a great thing for us and the council and the mayor's office and the state delegation stepped up so, so great with us in terms of trying to keep that clinic here. We, I don't think people realize how close it was to moving. So we're thrilled to have that good news.
Do we have any more questions for our VSO, Mike Sweeney? It's not a public meeting.
This is not a question.
Okay.
Can she go to the podium?
Can you come to the podium, please, Leroy? Sorry.
I wanted to add a friendly amendment to the speaker's remarks. The state term for what he was describing is utilization. And when I was asked by a former mayor to give some thought about how the services at the VA might be kept in Lynn, the very first question that I asked is what is the utilization rate? That is, to what extent are our people using those services? And when it's time to reduce, they reduce based on that factor.
Thank you so much for that. Alright, so it comes down to outreach, which we could really use a lot of, a lot more of to our veterans. And Mike, and we're working on that. Alright. Our last person to come to the podium will be Andrea Gail Bennett. She is the secretary for the State Executive Veterans Office. So are you going to update us on?
I'm going to update you. And so it's the deputy secretary, I'm not the secretary. He's off doing other things. So I'm here on behalf of EOVS, and there are two things that I would like to highlight that you should be aware of. And the first is to highlight the governor's new budget proposal and how it represents progress for veterans and their families. And as you may or may not be aware, currently, there's an annuity that veterans and family members are given in the amount of $2,000 a year. It's paid to Gold Star, parents, widows, service-connected death widows, and veterans who are 100% disabled. The HERO Act that was proposed proposes to expand that benefit to $2,500 a year, over two years, if approved by the legislature. And this would help families and individuals who live on a fixed income and who couldn't use, in these economic times, an extra bit of money. And so it's actually a $4.3 million investment that the governor's budget is proposing to increase it. And so if you have any questions about that, I'm happy to answer. And so just so that you're aware that that's what's going on, so that if anyone asks you, that is something that's happening. The other area that I would like to highlight, and Wayne briefly mentioned it, is that the governor recently launched a new initiative focused on tackling veteran homelessness across the state. And our department and the Department of Housing with Secretary Augustus, we met together to discuss how we can work on this combined and veteran homelessness campaign and engaging with local communities. So that brings us to Lynn and that Lynn Armory. This is a perfect opportunity to work with the state to provide housing for veteran, homeless veterans. And I guess they don't have to be homeless, but on the verge of homelessness, but just to provide affordable housing for veterans. And, and again, any questions, feel free to ask me about that.
Are you asking a question?
Can I ask a question to the general? Is that okay?
Go ahead.
General, how are you today?
I'm doing very well.
But I think a 25% increase in the annuity is fantastic news. How would I be able to reiterate that to our constituents? How would they sign up? How can they be aware of it?
So procedurally, as you know, the HERO Act, there was a hearing, there was a hearing, and it's going through committee. And so it hasn't been approved yet. So as legislators, let your legislators know that you're in favor, in favor of it. It is, it is favorable among the current legislatures. We don't, can't say we have no doubts, but you never know what's going to happen. So let the legislature know that we all want to, to support this, to support this bill. So once that's done, then that information will be passed down to the VSOs, and then they will pass the information out to local veterans.
So just to clarify, we're hoping the legislature approves the increase. However, if you're looking to sign up for the program, the liaison would be the VSO?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any other questions, concerns? Go ahead, counsel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Secretary.
Deputy Secretary.
Madam Secretary.
Deputy.
Clarification with your comment about the Armory. Is that a go signal or just a wish list?
No, this is a go signal. My, Mike, who did we meet with last week?
Jeff Waldron.
Jeff Waldron. Yeah, it's in process right now. And so I know they've spoken to the architecture, and things are in the planning phases, phase. So what needs to happen is connect with EOVS and housing at the state level for funding, because there's money.
So it's moving now?
Yes.
Congratulations. That's all I want to hear.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Just to clarify, what would we have to do in order to make those connections? Is there anything that the council can do in order to make sure that that connection is made for the housing for veterans?
I'm going to look to Mike. Do you know, do you know in terms, yeah, so.
There is a steering committee.
Okay.
I don't know all the members of the steering committee, but you can always contact me, and then I can send that information out to the powers that be. But yeah, just keep it on your front burner. There's money.
Thank you, Deputy Secretary. Any other questions or concerns? Alright, what is the wish of the committee? Thank you so much. I'll set, Deputy Secretary, you can have a seat. Yes, please come to the podium.
If I could just add to what I was talking about, the parade, we have formed a committee. David Solimini and myself, or David Solimini Sr., myself are the co-chairs. What we're looking for is a grand marshal. And I was thinking that somebody, if somebody had somebody that they can nominate from Lynn, specifically a veteran, to be the grand marshal of the parade, because it's a Lynn parade, would be super. I mean, there's also talk about, looking at some, you know, General McChrity and some of the other generals that are from the Massachusetts, but if we could find somebody from Lynn, doesn't have to be a general, that could be the grand marshal, it'd be great. You can get ahold of me, or get ahold of David Solimini Sr., if you have somebody to nominate.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any words? All done, all set? Alright, what is the, what is the wish of the committee?
Motion to adjourn.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the base and meeting committee meeting. Madam Clerk, please roll call.
Counselor Net?
Present.
Present Counsel Hogan?
Present.
Present Counsel Chakutis?
Present.
Present Counsel Walsh?
Present.
Present Counsel Field?
Present.
Could you please read transfer news?
We have $1 million from free cash to fund the FY23 net school spending shortfall.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
$400,000 from free cash to ISD expense for the FY24 budget shortfall and school electricity line.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
$636,271 from the wage SAB expense to fund the FY24 shortfalls for City of Lynn and local 739.
Motion approved.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
$45,598.64 from the Reserve to fund personal buyback per collective bargaining.
Yes. Motion approved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
$45,072.82 from the Reserve to fund sick buybacks per collective bargaining.
Motion approved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
$12,237.50 from the Reserve for the police department maintenance contracts not in the FY24 budget.
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
$36 from ISD expense to ISD bill of prior year.
Motion approved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
$550,000 for the FY24 Urban Forestry Fellowship, supporting a healthy tree canopy in Lynn. Motion to approve.
Yep, second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
$60,000 for the MassWorks grants for upgrades due to a change in the scope of work.
Motion approved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
$59,955.73 to the police for the FFY24 Municipal Road Safety Program grant. Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
$51,480 to the fire department FFY23 Emergency Management Performance Grant. Motion to approve.
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
$6,900 to the school department for the Financial Education Innovation Fund Grant Program.
Motion approved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
$2,400,000 to community development for the MassWorks Broad and Washington Street Reconstruction Project.
Motion approved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
$416,722.3 to the police department for the CY24 Shannon Grant. Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
$60,000 to the police department for the FY24 Behavioral Health Unit Grant. Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
$100,000 to the police department for the FY24 Behavioral Health Unit Grant.
Motion approved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
$100,000 to the police department for the FY24 Behavioral Health Unit Grant. Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
$100,000 to the police department for the FY24 Behavioral Health Unit Grant.
Motion approved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
$60,000 to the police department for the FY24 Behavioral Health Unit Grant. Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
$100,000 to the police department for the FY24 Behavioral Health Unit Grant. Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
$60,000 to the police department for the FY24 Behavioral Health Unit Grant. Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes.
Any new business? Any emergency? All emergency? You like all emergency, right? Okay.
Motion for an emergency.
Second. Second.
Roll call, all emergency, please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Alright, so any, anything, any new business?
No new business.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the Lynn City Council chambers tonight. As we honor a member of the Lynn community who recently passed away, but was a powerful member of this community that helped many youth from all over the city, whether it was the kids of Westland Papuaana or creating the new program of the Lynn Chargers. Tracy Ventura meant a lot to a lot of people in this city. And why we would love to do these things when people are alive, this is a great thing right here, to do this for Tracy and her memory, because she really meant a lot to a lot of kids in this city. And at this time, I'd just like Madam Clerk to read some of Tracy's accomplishments in the city.
Tribute to Tracy Ventura. Tracy Ventura was a lifelong resident of Lynn, Massachusetts. Growing up in Lynn, Tracy loved her community and took pride in the city that raised her. As a certified home health aid nursing assistant, Tracy spent many years working in nursing homes and assisting the elderly population. Tracy loved helping people and provided her patients with excellent care. Tracy held various positions over the years, but her most rewarding and meaningful position was being a mom. As a mother of six, Tracy took pride and participated in everything that had to do with her kids. She believed in getting involved and giving back to her community in any way she could. Tracy and her kids loved sports and cheerleading activities. This led to her initial involvement in the Papuaana organization. For many years, she was part of the Westland Little League, serving as a coach, secretary, and eventually the vice president of the organization. In 2008, Tracy founded and was the first president of the Lynn Chargers football and cheerleading organization. She was beyond excited to bring the first youth football league to Lynn that did not have a weight limit restriction. The Chargers football team welcomed all children and allowed so many youths from the community the opportunity to play football. After serving as president for many years, Tracy retired, but she never stopped being involved in youth sports through her children and her grandchildren. Tracy was well-known and admired in her community. She was friendly, fun-loving, authentic, and generous. She continually expressed love and charity. Her legacy of taking pride in her community and giving back lives were all through her kids. Tracy's oldest, Josie, has been involved in the community by coaching high school football at Lynn Classical High School. He also coached the Lynn Chargers football team, Westland Rams, Eastland Little League, and the Eastland Bulldogs. Mikey has brought a nutrition and fitness center to the City of Lynn that is committed to helping the community through health and wellness. Chad and Kena's entrepreneur spirits have allowed them to bring their small business to the city. Chad's well-known clothing line and Kena's pastry goods have been successful and well-loved in the Lynn community. Odell Jr.'s annual Christmas toy fundraiser has grown over the past couple of years, helping out several families in need. Tracy lit the torch, and her kids and grandkids will continue to carry it in her honor. Her mission was one that made a great difference in the lives of many people. Her love and giving nature will live forever in the City of Lynn. Tracy's departure touched many in her beautiful smile, friendly welcoming nature, and her boisterous personality will forever be missed.
And at this time, we have a couple of words from the mayor of Lynn.
Thank you, Counsel Hogan. Good evening, counsel. On behalf of the City of Lynn, I just want to recognize the amazing contributions that we just heard from Tracy Ventura. When people like Tracy invest so much in their community, in our community, the lives that they touch are typically their own reward. They're doing it because of the value they see and the way it impacts and shapes our youth. That being said, it is our responsibility to recognize and hold up those great works, because those are our role models. Those are who we look to when we think about who we want to be as a community. It is such an incredible gift to our community, the people that devote their lives and their, and their time and their talents to creating opportunities for our youth. And it is a lot of work to create those. And so we're just so fortunate that we had those contributions from Tracy, and I want to thank her entire family, and we have an official citation to the family of Tracy Ventura. In recognition of Tracy's commitment to the youth of the City of Lynn, may she rest in peace. Thank you.
At this time, if we could have Tracy's children and our family, you guys can come up here, and we'll present you guys the citations, and we'll get, we'll get a picture with the mayor. Thank you. Come on up. I'm sorry, guys, my, my voice is gone. As you guys can hear, I teach classes in the morning, so I was, I was yelling at them this morning, so my voice is gone from class this morning. But behalf of my family and everyone that's in attendance, this is so much more than we would like expect, right? My mom had such a beautiful energy to her, and the biggest message that she always had was making sure that everyone around her was taken care of, right? For many years, right, she, I don't want to say sacrificed, but she invested so much time in so many other families to make sure the other families were taken care of, to the point which led her to starting the Lynn Chargers program. The overall intention was to make sure that the community always had avenues, and all the kids always had different places to feel at home, right? So the organization, you know, from the Lynn Chargers to the family, it's, it's all a representation of the people that are here, the people that will see this, the people in the community. Without like the support and without us sticking together, none of it would happen, right? So I just personally want to say, you know, I'm forever grateful for this, right? I think in the time that we are right now, I think sticking together is of need. I think that we all need an opportunity to really come together and support each other, right? And just spread the message of, you know, we have our neighbors back, and we're here to support and uplift each other. So I'll just end with this, is understanding, my mom had this natural presence that when she left, you knew that she was there, right? And you knew that no matter what, you felt her in your presence. So I ask all of you guys, is that when you leave, the people that you love and care the most and closest to you, hopefully they feel your presence when you leave, because you never know when your time is up. Alright, so thank you on behalf of the family. Thank you for you guys. Thank you for the mayor. Thank you for the city for making this happen. I know it's not something that I want to say is easy to do, simply saying that you guys came together and to make it happen, and we're grateful for it. So thank you. I appreciate it. The city councils, come up for a group photo, please.
Counsel Alonsen?
Present.
Present Counsel Chakutis?
Present.
Present Counsel Field?
Present.
Present Counsel Hogan?
Present.
Present Counsel Lapierre?
Present.
Present Counsel Matul?
Present.
Present Counsel McLean?
Present.
Present Counsel Meany?
Present.
Present Counsel Mejimadre?
Present.
Present Counsel Net?
Present.
Present Counsel Walsh?
Present.
Will we all rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance?
Mr. President, please keep in mind the family of Barbara Fornia.
Mr. President, special prayer for Pat Kaln, former chair for zoning board of appeals, the longest-serving member of any boards in the City of Lynn. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, and all. Accept the minutes from the January 23 meeting. We have a motion to accept them.
Motion to accept.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Accepted the minutes. Communications?
We have no communications.
No communications. Public hearings?
We have the petition of Leafy's Holistic Meals LLC for permission to operate a marijuana product manufacturing business pursuant to Section 22 of the Lynn zoning ordinance at 141 Eastern Ave.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Give us your name, address, please?
Sure, I'm Attorney Blake Mensing, 100 State Street, Boston, Massachusetts, here on behalf of Leafy's Holistic Meals.
Cameron Landry, 186 Norfolk Ave, Swam Scott, with Monte's Restaurant and Leafy's Holistic Meals.
Okay. So you guys are the ones pro-
Proponents, yes.
Okay, alright, great. Do you have a seat?
Sure.
Any questions? People will have you come up, okay?
Absolutely.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Calvin Anderson, 12 Concord Street, Lynn. This is my neighborhood, and I think it's the wave of the future, so let's do it now and do it right.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Anyone in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor, seeing that part of the hearing is closed? Anybody in opposition to this? Anybody in opposition? Come up to the podium. Anyone in opposition? Seeing that part of the hearing is closed, what is the wish of the council? Counsel Alonsen? Thank you, Mr. President. This is a long process. There were tons, tons of consultations, neighborhood meetings, a lot of phone calls, a lot of educational. This family has served Ward III for years and years. They're a very respected family. As you can see, there's no opposition tonight. There's no opposition either, so I'm calling this motion to approve. We have a motion to approve. We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Counsel Alonsen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.[1773.51]
Yes.
Yes. Council Lapierre.
Yes.
Yes. Council Mathul.
Yes.
Yes. Council McLean.
Yes.
Yes. Council Meany.
Yes.
Yes. Council Mejimadre.
Yes.
Yes. Council Net.
Yes.
Yes. Council Walsh.
Yes. Motion carries. Just want to say, I know that Council Alonson did a lot of work on this in our region of the community. We, some of the councils that are here went through some of this in the very early stages when some of these facilities were opening and it's important to make sure you listen to everybody, so good job on that and congratulations. All right. Next public hearing.
We have the petition of Danae Rosa, manager of 82 Fayette Street LLC, to erect an apartment house in a business district with four floors, eight units, and 16 parking spaces at 82 Fayette Street.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to continue to March 12, 2024, at the request of the petitioner.
Because we have a motion to move it to the next meeting, okay? Second? Any discussion? Roll call.
Council Alonso.
Yes.
Yes. Council Chakutis.
Yes.
Yes. Council Field.
Yes.
Yes. Council Hogan.
Yes.
Yes. Council Lapierre.
Yes.
Yes. Council Mathul.
Yes.
Yes. Council McLean.
Yes.
Yes. Council Meany.
Yes.
Yes. Council Mejimadre.
Yes.
Yes. Council Net.
Yes.
Yes. Council Walsh.
Yes. With the next meeting. Any other public hearings?
No other public hearings?
Public hearings to be set down.
We have the petition of William Dandrio of Fountain Realty Trust for permission to construct a multi-use business center containing the following uses: contractors yard, auto repair, auto body, builders yard, shop, boat construction maintenance, light repairs, repairs, manufacturing, research and development, warehousing and garaging at 26 Alley Street. Hours of operation will be 24 hours, seven days per week. Petition of Comcast for a grant a location beginning at Sutton Street to provide service to 139 Central Ave. Petition of National Grid for a grant a location at Hanover and North Common Street. Petition of National Grid for a grant a location at 189 Alley Street.
It's the wish of the council.
Motion to set them down.
A motion to set them down. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Set them down. Committees, public property. Council Chakutis.
A unanimous vote of the committee. Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Pat carries. Licensing. Council Field.
Mr. President, we have a unanimous vote by our licensing committee. I make a motion to approve it.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. All right. Veterans. Council McLean.
We had a wonderful update on, at our veterans meeting and I'm happy to report out just one more time that the process for the clinic, the veterans' clinic to stay in Lynn is moving forward and just weeks out from a lease being signed. So all is well and that's my report.
All right. So we have a report from the veterans. We have a motion to accept the report?
Motion to accept.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carries. Ways and Means, Council Net.
Thank you, Mr. President. A unanimous vote of the committee and make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second?
Second.
Second. Clerk, read the transfers.
We have transfers that were laid off from January 23rd, $640,000 for the fire department, $90,000 to the fire department, $300 to the mayor for prior year bill. New transfers are $1 million from free cash to fund the FY '23 net school spending shortfall, $400,000 from free cash to ISD expense for the FY '24 budget shortfall in school electricity line, $636,271 from wage staff expense to fund the FY '24 shortfalls per city of Lynn and local 739, $45,598.64 from the reserve to fund personal buybacks per collective bargaining, $45,072.82 from reserve to fund sick buybacks per collective bargaining, $12,237.50 from the reserve for police department maintenance contracts that were not in the FY '24 budget, $36 from ISD expense to ISD bill of prior year. Certified funds, $550,000 for the FY '24 Urban Forestry Fellowship, $60,000 for the Mass Works grants for upgrade due to change in scope, $59,955.73 for the police through FY '24 Municipal Road Safety Program Grant, $51,480 to the fire department for the FY '23 Emergency Management Performance Grant, $6,900 to the school department for the Financial Education Innovation Fund Grant Program, $2,400,000 to community development for Mass Works Broad and Washington Street Reconstruction Project, $416,722.3 to the police department for the CY '24 Shannon Grant, $60,000 to the police department for the FY '24 Behavioral Unit Grant, $100,000 to the police department for the FY '24 Behavioral Unit Grant. We have one order, the city of Lynn election warrant to all inhabitants of the city of Lynn who are qualified to vote in the presidential primary on March 5, 2024. Close will open at 7:00 AM and close at 8:00 PM. All citizens will, in several precincts in which they are entitled to vote, give their votes on one presidential preference, a state committeeman, state committeewoman, and award committee. Sample ballots for all wards and precincts are available on the city website and the election office for public viewing. We also have early voting, which is being held in city hall from February 24th and 25th from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM and on February 26th through March 1st during regular business hours. The ward and precinct locations are Ward 1, Precinct 1 Shoemaker School, Ward 1, Precinct 2, 3, and 4 Sisson School, Ward 2, All Precinct, St. Pius, Ward 3, All Precinct, Marshall Middle School, Ward 4, All Precinct, Harrington School, Ward 5, All Precinct, Lynn Tech Annex, Ward 6, All Precinct, Lynn Tech Fieldhouse, and Ward 7, All Precinct, Breed Junior High. And that's it.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second and discussion. Roll call.
Council Alonso.
Yes.
Yes. Council Chakutis.
Yes.
Yes. Council Field.
Yes.
Yes. Council Hogan.
Yes.
Yes. Council Lapierre.
Yes.
Yes. Council Mathul.
Yes.
Yes. Council McLean.
Yes.
Yes. Council Meany.
Yes.
Yes. Council Mejimadre.
Yes.
Yes. Council Net.
Yes.
Yes. Council Walsh.
Yes. Any other business council?
Yeah, we all, emergency vote by committee.
We have an emergency. We have a motion for an emergency. We have a second. Roll call.
Council Alonso.
Yes.
Yes. Council Chakutis.
Yes.
Yes. Council Field.
Yes.
Yes. Council Hogan.
Yes.
Yes. Council Lapierre.
Yes.
Yes. Council Mathul.
Yes.
Yes. Council McLean.
Yes.
Yes. Council Meany.
Yes.
Yes. Council Mejimadre.
Yes.
Yes. Council Net.
Yes.
Yes. Council Walsh.
Yes. All right. Is that all, Council Net? That's it?
That's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Any old business? New business? We're going to have the clerk read some new business.
We have resolved, having convened an open meeting on February 27th, 2024, prior to the statement of interest closing date, the city, Lynn City Council, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority a statement of interest form dated March 1, 2024 for the Edward A. Sisson Elementary School, 58 Canomo Avenue in Lynn, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority category for which an application may be submitted to the MSBA. Replacement of windows and doors to allow for increased building security, reduces heat loss, increase energy conservation, and overall reduced energy consumption as priority. Statement of interest for the MSBA Accelerated Repair Program for 2024. Hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of any application, the awarding of a grant of any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits Lynn School District to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
I think Mr. Donovan's here. Could you come up to the podium, Mike, for a minute and just give us a quick overview of what this is?
Yes, sir. Good evening, councilors. The city of Lynn is seeking to submit a statement of interest to the MSBA to replace the windows and doors at the Sisson School. The Sisson School has got a lot of work done in the past number of years. The roof was put on in '08. We're in the midst of a $4.6 million grant that was received by the school department to replace the heating system at the school as well as add air conditioning. Floors, the ceilings, the lights have all been replaced in the past years. Looking at the schools in Lynn, the Sisson School was built in 1953 and therefore is one of our newer buildings. And with the refreshing work that we've been doing, excuse me, in the past few years, this will close the envelope essentially, as you say, with the school by putting in, replacing the windows that were put in as best we can tell sometime in the mid-'80s, allowing for tighter building envelope, which will make the air conditioning, the heating work better, but also give it the school a new look and higher security with the doors. So this will bring us, not to the end, because we have some handicapped improvements to be made inside the building. We're looking at putting a handicap bathroom and a lift in the building this coming year. So, but it's going to bring the school refreshed like we did with the hood school a few years ago so that it's it's as modern as we can make the school with the bones that it has. The school is in good shape. The school's not going anywhere for another 50, 60 years. So this is an investment for the city and for the school. Any questions? I'd be more than happy to answer them.
And this is, we're just submitting to them. We haven't been guaranteed anything as of yet for this.
No, sir. We're just, this is the initial step, is the authorization for the superintendent to submit this grant.
Okay.
Mr. President, if I may.
If you could. Dr. Meany.
How you doing, Mike? So in the event that the MSBA declines our request for these replacements, are Sisson School going to get upgrades? We're looking to do the windows and doors with this grant. If they turn us down, which they often do the first time, we will apply again next year. It often takes two years or three years to get on track depending on how many other communities apply for a grant in any given year. Two years ago, we received a grant for the Druids Doors and Windows. A year and a half, a year, year or two prior to that, the LBTI main building, Doors and Windows. Prior to that, we did the hood, windows, doors, and roof. So it's usually you apply, you may not get it the first time, the second time you usually get into the queue and then it's another year through the process. So this is just the door and windows. All the other articles I've talked about, the items, excuse me, have already been done or will be being done. This summer, for instance, we're going to work on the lift and the handicap bathroom and the new heating system has already been granted to us and that's going in as we speak. They're in the crawl space running pipe. So, so if we, if we don't get the MSBA, we're looking at two to three years. Are the current conditions of the windows and the energy efficiency, is it serviceable? I mean, the, the school has had some repairs, as you said, but I just want to get the current status of the windows. Yeah, the windows are serviceable. I want to say four or five years ago, we replaced all the glazing in it and the hardware on the windows. But they are Sash-type and they're old. They're from the '80s, so they're difficult to operate. They are operable, but they're difficult to operate and they're past their useful life. They still work. I mean, the windows here are 1948 and they still work. It's just that they would work better if we can put new windows in and it's time for new windows in this particular school.
Okay. Thank you. Council McLean?
Yeah, I was wondering, are there any other schools in the queue? Like, has Washington Elementary or Corbett Elementary had any work or Brickett?
Not with the MSBA. The, those three schools, Corbett has not, Washington has not, and Brickett has not. Brickett had a roof put on it and the envelope was repaired in 2007 or '08 and we just made the school handicapped accessible this past year by putting a lift and a handicap bathroom in. The Corbett School is, is a school that's had repairs made to it. Yes, I'm not going to say there's been no work done. All those schools have received work, but not at the level where doing doors and windows or a roof. Because one of the things that happens is when you have an old building like that, if the value of the repair exceeds more than 30% of the value of the building, you have to fully upgrade the building to all the handicap accessibility regulations, which means an elevator, which means new bathrooms, which means in some of these old buildings, the doors are recessed, it's get a variance, reconstruct the doorway. So the windows may be $3 million, but the building may only be worth, you know, $4 million. So now we're into something that can be more than a million or $2 to make the handicap upgrades in order to qualify to get the grant for.
For the building.
Yeah, because we accounted this at the Druids School where we're receiving a door and window grant, but we have to make approximately $600,000. They have an elevator, thankfully, in that building, but other improvements to, to the building to fully comply with the handicap code. Since we had the elevator, it was an easy choice because the elevator will run us, you know, over a million dollars in a location like that where the floors are all at different levels.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council Lapierre?
Thank you. Mr. Donovan, it's good to have you here. I just had a request and piggybacking off of Council McLean's comments. Is there a way in which you could provide the council with, let's say, the last couple of fiscal year's worth of projects that you were able to do, particularly on the school side, and list them for us with the amounts that were spent from your budget and so forth? Just so we have a better handle on some of the improvements that you've done over the course of this fiscal year and last fiscal year. One of the things, Councilor Mathul and I, last month, were at Washington Community. They have a gym issue with leakage. I think you're aware, but it might be an appointment or a roof issue, but they were looking for some guidance and we said that we thought that you were obviously knowledgeable about this, but it resulted in some cancellation of games and things of that nature. So I'm sure you're following up on requests like that daily, but it would be good to give the council a perspective on the improvements and money spent from your budget that went to the capital improvements, not to say MSBA stuff necessarily, but the work that you've mentioned, aforementioned in these schools. I think that would be very helpful, particularly for new councils and myself.
That's on my desk, actually. I'm going through it to make sure that we're not putting repairs in there. In regards to the Washington School, in 2009, we did a subfloor drainage system to take the water. It's groundwater that's coming in through the foundation walls and it leads to a pump chamber. What happens with pumps? The pump failed. The pump's been replaced since then, but that's what happens, the water. We have a system in place and the pump, the alarm didn't go off and it wasn't caught in time and there was an issue.
So that's been resolved?
That's been resolved.
Thank you.
Any other questions? What's the wish of the council? Would entertain a motion to submit to the MSBA?
Motion to submit to the MSBA.
Oh, motion to grant.
Motion to grant.
You have a motion to grant.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Council Alonso.
Yes.
Yes. Council Chakutis.
Yes.
Yes. Council Field.
Yes.
Yes. Council Hogan.
Yes.
Yes. Council Lapierre.
Yes.
Yes. Council Mathul.
Yes.
Yes. Council McLean.
Yes.
Yes. Council Meany.
Yes.
Yes. Council Mejimadre.
Yes.
Yes. Council Net.
Yes.
Yes. Council Walsh.
Yes. Submit. Any other new business from the council?
I make a motion to adjourn, Mr. President.
All right. Motion to adjourn. All in favor?
I could. I love it.
I love it. We're just finishing.
Chairperson Patricia Barton?
Present.
Commissioner Martha Phelps?
Present.
Commissioner Miguel Duna?
Present.
Attorney James Lamano?
Present.
And Captain Chris Kowdick?
Present.
Present. Definitely have a call. They have minutes for my January 16th meeting. Have you had a chance?
Yes.
Complete? Any questions?
No questions.
Leave it.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of January 16th, 2024.
I'll second your motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we have some one-day licenses. We have one for Northeastern University for, for their graduates on Friday, the 28th, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m., to be held at the Lynn Museum. We have another birthday party on March 2nd, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., also held at the Lynn Museum. On March 16th, from 12:00 to 5:00, a baby shower to be held at the Lynn Museum. I want to take a look. One of you go first?
What else you want to do?
I'd like to be at the Hibernian. They're having their road race fundraiser on March 24th, from 11:00 to 5:00. And that's being held at the Hibernian, 105 Federal Street. And lastly, the name of the organization is Nancy Takas Conway. She wants to have, no, that's the baby shower. No, another baby shower. Nope, that's the baby shower. This is just...
It's just a form.
Yep, it's that. That's the same one, the baby shower. Okay, so, what is your call?
I'll make a motion to approve the three events at the Lynn Museum, and the fee will be charged, not waived.
Right. You ready now?
Yep.
Yep. Okay, so we have a motion to pass the one-day licenses at the Lynn Museum, the three of them. And we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then I need a motion for the Hibernian.
I'll make a motion to approve the Hibernian building corp for the road race on March 24th, 2024, and that fee will be waived.
Right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. We have a change of manager and officers and directors of an alcohol club license for the Lynn Yacht. Is there anyone here from the Lynn Yacht Club?
The Lynn Yacht Club?
The Lynn Yacht Club.
Okay, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry, you said, no, this is for the yacht club. Okay.
The volunteer yacht club.
Okay.
The Lynn's that she...
Okay, so this one's the volunteer type of Lynn volunteer. Thank you. Yep. Make sure, click the words. Yes, that's about it, volunteer. Yeah, it's just... Is it 84, 86, Lynn Way?
No, 68, Lynn Way. Is this a different application?
Yes. Yes.
Uh-oh. I'm from the volunteer.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda. Yeah, we have, it's for the Lynn. Yes. Okay.
Not me.
Not you? Okay. Anyone here from the yacht club? I'm going to put this on. I'll hold this to hand.
I want to let them know that there is no volunteer yacht clubs, so he's not here, that they're there, that there's no...
It's not on the agenda. Sir? Excuse me, could you, one second, please? Okay. Your application is not on the agenda for this meeting. So, if you have to...
Okay.
Okay.
All right, well, so the clerk's office, it's only got 20.
Okay. Which is submitted. Oh, so now it has to be submitted. You have to submit. Have you seen me?
No.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Okay. Okay, I have two public hearings scheduled, so that goes now. Public hearing to order. First on the agenda is a public hearing for a new wine and malt retail license for Lynn Market, 38 Market Street.
That, Jim, there was a change of manager on Populus for that one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I am so sorry. Well, let me, let me, this is public hearing, then.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. We have a change of manager of non-premise all-alcohol restaurant license, Populus, 37 Market Street, Francois Lamano. It's a proposed manager.
Good afternoon, David Westbrunst, the clerk of Lynn. It's his dad, this is the proposed manager. They have a, an establishment, it's the old Brandy Barrel they're doing over right now. They also have a business in Chelsea that this young man's been working hard, and he's kind of the general manager there, but his dad would like to move him up to officially a manager here to get him going, family business. So I respectfully request it to be approved. I think the tip was in there.
It was.
It was?
It was, yep.
Sorry.
It was.
Thank you.
Thank you for providing it.
Absolutely. Anyone have any questions for them?
The name remain? It's still be the same?
It's the same, it's the same name, yes. It's kind of a franchise. The other one is Populus in Chelsea.
Okay. Judge Ryan Lamano, is everything in?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I thought this was...
A little bit of the story, he's been working there four years, the Chelsea location, and as a manager, he, he's been working for three years. So he's been running the operation, running the alcohol, and now it's a moment to live. That's why we're going.
Are you concerned, is that what you said?
Yes. They're great brothers.
You have a fan, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then, he's over 21?
Yeah, he's only 22. He was a citizen.
Right, oh, yeah.
I do not have any new questions.
I don't have any questions either. So I guess I can entertain a motion to approve the change of manager for Populus.
I like the motion that we do forward with the change of manager for Populus in Lynn.
And I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thank you. Counsel Lapierre?
Yeah. Counsel Ms. Ray? No. That's all? Let's be serious. Okay, now, I'm serious this time. Okay, public hearing will now commence. Okay, sorry, there. All right, so first on our agenda is Lynn Market, 38 Market Street, seeking a new wine and malt retail package license.
Good evening, Attorney Satterwhite. I was here a couple months ago. We pushed it off, that's today. Ms. Phelps is here now.
Yes.
Nice to see you.
Hello.
I believe the application was complete. You asked that attorney Lamano last time. And there was an additional question that we believe you had. Do some research, I spoke to him about this this afternoon as well. So we're hoping that we can get the license for the new wine and malt retail package for Lynn Market, which is just down the street from here.
Okay. Have you spoken with your neighbors at all? I mean, has there been any, any issues or any concerns?
Yeah.
City miles?
He sent the certified miles. He's a good neighbor. Lots of people frequent him. And there's been no issues. Now, we continue to remain, even with the wine and malt retail being added into the premises. There's a lot of space in there, I don't know if you've been in the store before, so there is room to add that in addition to what he currently sells as a continuing store.
Okay. Okay, I have to add, is there anyone here to speak either for Lynn Market or in opposition? Didn't have a liquor license, is anyone here? Okay. There's one, we've had anybody. All right. Okay. We have to make that, we have to... Decision, yeah? Is, first of all, first question, is it, is it needed? Okay, Matt, you're getting it. Yeah.
I can answer any single question you may have. There is probably, as we know, that there's a building on that Sixth Street and Borough Street. This is where they're building. People look at where the vicinity is compared to other liquor stores, there's not one around him. You have one that's closer to Kip, and the other one is on the other side towards Washington Street. So that this particular vicinity, there, there is probably the continued building, especially with all the new units in that particular area. There was, Unit Street was before you, not too long ago, that was approved, and then there were two that were in this vicinity that weren't approved because they were across the street from each other. That was on Franklin Street, State Street. That's not the same situation here, there's not a store across the street from where he's, where he is currently located. So there's, there's nothing in that particular vicinity, aside from the two that I just mentioned.
But you're at 38 Market Street, correct?
Correct.
And then that one's on State Street, which is perpendicular.
Right.
Well, State, State Street towards Kip, yeah. It's not across like the, the last application was.
It's, they're not even half miles apart, man. I mean, the, 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 the walk-in distance. I just think it'd be consistent, Pat.
Yeah.
It just moved to the, 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 the. Okay. What do you think?
We'll go back to the same issue that we had before, of the proximity of, of, of this, 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 of course, together. So, as I mean, absolutely.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see the need at this point in time.
Yeah, so I can entertain a motion. We must make a motion. I'm getting, correct?
Yeah, no, I'll make a motion that we do not allow the license at, the beer and wine license at 38 Market Street.
I want second one.
Okay, we'll have a call. Chairperson Barton? I agree, no license. Yep. Commissioner Phelps?
Yes, I agree, no license.
And Commissioner Duna's?
I agree, no license.
All right, yep. Okay, next on the agenda, this public hearing is a transfer of an annual all-alcohol and premises beverages license at Oye Bonita Bar and Grill, 159 Lewis Street. How are you? Nice to meet you.
My name is Skylar Logan. I'm a attorney with Church Renewal. First, I just want to say thank you guys for hearing us today. And let me introduce you to Adriana Montoya, the proud owner of Oye Bonita at 157 Lewis Street. She's a Lynn resident, originally from Colombia. She worked in the bar and restaurant industry for 23 years, with 12 of those being in a managerial role. She's serve safe certified, which means she understands how to serve alcohol responsibly. And this will give her a chance to put her experience to work in her own way. She has the support, she's not doing this alone. Her husband's here with her, and he will be doing, he will be managing the kitchen, and he has over 25 years of experience in the industry. Lynn is known as a gateway city, a gateway to the American dream. This, this opportunity for the Montoya family will give them the chance to make their lifelong dreams come true, to enter into the restaurant industry. To be clear, this is not a club, this is not a nightclub. Adriana's vision is to build a family-friendly environment, giving the neighborhood a taste of the culture that she's bringing from Colombia. And the space has been used as a bar and grill, restaurant and bar for decades now. In terms of the neighborhood, we've met with Ward Three City Councilor, Ali Sog, Coco, and, and she understands what's expected from the neighborhood. There's plenty of parking on Lewis Street for the customers to be accommodated. Obviously, there's a lot of residences surrounding that area, so she understands that the noise can't be too loud, her customers can't hang out on the side of the building. These are all things that she's aware of, and she's going to comply with. Oye Bonita would be a staple in the community, a place where families can go to enjoy each other's company, have a great meal and a cocktail. This is a Latina woman who's come from Colombia and worked long, hard hours to get to this position before you today. To be a business owner, to support of her husband, this is a family business run by a Lynn family. Adriana and Oye Bonita would be great for the neighborhood, and I firmly ask that you guys accept the transfer of the licenses.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone here to speak in support of this application? Or is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Okay, you ready now? This, this was, this is a transfer. Who, who, who originally had this license, do you know?
Eminem Restaurant okay.
What are your hours of operation?
Um, she's aiming to open around lunchtime with a 12:30 a.m. shutdown. Okay. So, yeah, 12:30 close with everyone vacating, including staff at 1 a.m.
How many employers will be?
They have a capacity of 99 total, so they plan to have like about 10 waitresses, waiters, and about three bartenders to start.
And they'll be serving food till 12:30?
12:30. What is the plan of the cuisine?
The plan of the cuisine, 12:00 in the day, 10:00 at night.
12:00, 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. is when the kitchen will be open.
So, if the people want food after 10:00 p.m., her husband is probably going to serve
small appetizers, but not like sort of full-on, limited menu.
Okay.
They all have to be tipped for, I think, that they...
The bartender. The bartender has some certifications. Yes.
He's a certificate bartender.
And so does she, she's also.
And can you, can you talk a little about her experience on the business?
Si, puede hablar un poco usted de su experiencia con tener negocios. Okay. Si, bueno, yo llevo acá en el país, llevo 24 años, trabajo en la ciudad de Lynn desde hace 20 años, he trabajó en diferentes restor, restaurantes. He trabajado, bueno, inicié en el 2000, en Raffi's Play, trabajé como por dos años, luego trabajé en Rico con Creollo, luego trabajé, trabajé mucho, in Phoenix, trabajé en Tríos, trabajé en Di Marcos, trabajé, he trabajó en varios restaurantes acá.
Um, she says she has over 20 years of experience working here in Lynn at very well-known restaurants, as you may have heard some of the names, Di Marcos, Rico con Creollo, Tríos, Phoenix.
Donde marido. And, y bueno, últimamente está trabajando en La Taberna.
And recently, La Taberna.
Rancho Grande, pues.
Rancho Grande.
Realmente.
So, is he a question? He has experience?
No, I just, because I, I know that she does have that experience, but it's good to know that we are bringing into the city somebody that is a one-to-the-city, and two, is also experienced in business, so.
Anything else?
I'm off, I'm off. All right, so there you go, second entertainment motion to approve the transfer of this license.
I'll make a motion that we do allow the transfer of all, all new into the bar, all alcohol premises, for a regular license.
I'll second that motion.
We have no fault.
Chairperson Barton?
Yes.
Commissioner Phelps?
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Duna's?
Yes, to approve.
Uh, Chair Person Barton?
Yes.
Commissioner, um, Phelps?
Yes, approved.
Commissioner Fines?
Yes, approved.
Thank you. Good luck. Gracias.
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 Thank you.
Okay, and next, two things. A public hearing. Next on this agenda is we have a change of manager in doing business of an all-alcohol beverage license, Eminem Restaurants. Thank you. Anybody here? Anyone here? Eminem Restaurants, a transfer? For a change of manager. That is needed, yes, this is, now. Okay, so, it just unfolds, mm, this way. Okay. But, uh...
We're moving to East. First, first?
No. Okay. We have a conference next.
Excuse me, was there a call for Lynn Market License?
Yeah. I was gonna hold it to the end of the meeting. Really, yeah, sorry. Um, Congress of Republicans?
Before we begin managing, this is Sonia, on the agenda you had a change of manager, and Laura Lee Paul, I mean, Sonia showed up anyway. And Sonia just kept sort of riding, was on the agenda for a change of management, I think it's been approved.
It wasn't?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
I just wanted to learn.
Okay, yep, absolutely. Okay. No, thanks. You got the best laces, right? Thank you. Okay. All right. So, Conference of Republicans. Okay. Thank you.
I'm attorney by Callie, this is Raoul Sanchez, he's the manager. We also have out here the individuals needing a police report. All the individuals, no? So, uh, let me tell you, my understanding is, I know I've spoken to Laura, she speaks Spanish, okay? I don't know this gentleman, but I tell you, okay? Um, as I understand it, this is a dispute over a, a bill. And, and I would characterize it as, I have, by the way, the receipt. Um, I would characterize it as misunderstanding because they tell me that two days later, the gentleman came back in, was here, and paid it, okay? Um, I also understand, and, and let me just show it to you so you can see. Uh, Laura explained, uh, and Sandy, uh, translated that he bought, uh, shots for some of the people, that he said comes in once a week, he lives on Ray Street, if you're familiar with that area, was Lynn, it's about four blocks from, uh, the establishment. Um, the back called the police with respect to the dispute. Uh, the police came, they didn't see the individual, he, I don't know how he got home, but I know he lives within four blocks. Um, and, uh, when I spoke with her, uh, and, and Raoul, uh, first of all, there were five people on, from the staff. Laura was the one who served him, uh, and he's here. So, uh, I don't know how long he was there, but we, this, let me point out one other thing. The, the agenda says that the incident was on the twenty-eighth, but if you look at the police report, the incident was on the twenty-second, which I think is a Thursday, or Friday. So it's like twenty minutes past, uh, twelve. So it's a Friday, but it was really Thursday, the twenty-second, I believe, okay? Um, and so, uh, with respect to what his condition was, uh, there, there was no problem with him until it came time to close and, and pay up. And I think, as I was explaining to me, it was because he believed he had his credit card, uh, there. They didn't have his credit card. And then the, the bartender did the right thing, he called the police, with respect to the dispute. Um, and as I say, they tell me that he came in two days later and paid. And, and they are here. The both of the individuals named in the police report. That's my, that I, did I recount it?
Yep.
So you're a lawyer?
No.
That's.
Yes, lawyer, okay.
Somebody's gonna have to translate. Can you translate? You're gonna translate?
I'm gonna be. When I do, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Okay.
This is Laura.
You have the bartender?
Laura, this is the bartender.
Okay. I, I agree, I agree that you did the right thing calling the police. But the, the primary reason why we had you come in for this discussion is because of the intoxicated level of patron. It's, it sounds like over-serving. And that's something you have to be very, very careful of. Yeah. Um, his condition was, I mean... You want?
I think he wants to speak. I think, you step over here and, and let me just suggest to you, I think you can explain whatever you want.
Thanks. So that night, um, I had a flu, so it was a high fever, pretty much. So that day, I didn't...
Can we have your name?
I'll tell you. So, um...
I'll tell you, I'll share that. Yes.
Yes.
That's it.
So, um, I didn't eat well that morning and I stopped at the, the bar, since I know them, so I was gonna drink a couple beers, I drank two. And, uh, since I didn't eat good that morning, I think that two beer was enough to, to, to react. And I told, I handed the card to her, so I asked her that, to give my card back. She says, you gonna hand me the card? And I asked her again, so that's why she called the police in. Um, that was that from there. But I was intoxicated, not, not, none of that. It's just, I wasn't feeling good that day and two beer was enough for me to, I guess, to... Because I wasn't, I wasn't feeling good that day, so it was enough to, to, to react.
Tried to say, yeah, some medication, or if you drink, like, to feed it, that's...
No, there was no medication.
No, no medication?
No medication. It was just, that, that two beer, I was sick that day, pretty much, so that two beer was enough to react on my, my body. And then, but the next day, then I came to the bar, I apologized to Laura, and she was there too. I paid her the bill. I think I served two shots for the girls too. Not sure the name, there, but that was that from there. And I went home.
I, I understand that, but your condition could have put their license in jeopardy. You understand, they could lose their license if they over-serve you. They don't know you're sick, so, you know.
Well, that's not me then, I mean, but...
Okay, well.
I just wanted to speak on them.
That's why we're here, so that you fully understand, you know, about over-serving. You have to be very, very careful, because you don't know if he's sick or not, so...
Well, I, I, I want to apologize for the incident. To, for, for, please.
To, yeah, to them, yeah, to them. But you do, you do understand what I'm saying about the possibility of over-serving. And by his description, the, the description that the police gave, he definitely sounded intoxicated. And the last week he had was at your establishment, you will be held responsible. Okay. Just, just make sure, make certain that all of your bartenders are all there with that. Okay? You have anything else?
Uh, I wonder, uh, Laura, are you gender certified?
Yeah, she has it, she has it.
You have anything?
I'm...
Si, yes, everything, sir.
When you go to, uh, to the class, it's been teach you how to identify also, people who are, you know, having one or two medications. You, you need, that's your responsibility as bartender as well, to, to make sure that the customer is, is, I mean, if you see something weird, go to the manager and just tell him, this guy is, um...
Pues, soy igual que el otro, porque yo soy la mala, porque estaba con, en América, y ella quiere, trabaja con, también, es para, también es para, okay? Pero no me, no, no, that's, it's, it's, sorry.
They understand, but she didn't say. Um, she said that that day she wasn't there, but the next day she came to the, so, to the, to the, to the, to the bar.
Who was the manager on duty that night?
Uh, can you read the manager's name?
Laura.
Uh, Laura.
Oh, you were there, eh? Just wanna make sure there was a manager there, you know, for something, yeah, okay. Right, I got you, all right. Very good. Any else?
I don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it.
All right.